School committee meeting to order.
And I'll call the Concord-Carla Regional School Committee meeting to order. Please note we're being recorded. The Concord School Committee and Concord-Carla Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law. Conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting. They have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and return to open session at approximately 6:30 p.m. Can I have a roll call vote for the region?
I think we have to move it first.
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
For the region. Can I have a roll call vote for the region?
We got a lot.
John's denying.
About aye.
Booth aye.
Radio aye.
Executive session.
When do you execute?
Most of the aye.
And?
I'll make a motion for the Concord School Committee to move to executive session.
For the same purpose.
For the same purpose. So moved.
Second. Second, then roll call vote.
John's denying.
About aye.
Booth aye.
Radio aye.
The Concord-Carla Regional School Committee meeting back to order.
And I will bring the Concord School Committee meeting back to work.
Please note we're being recorded. So, do we have any other?
Yes, over here.
Lemon aye.
Come on out.
Come on out. Yeah.
Yeah, one over here. Ava, can you grab it? My turn is here.
So hi, Lauren Neiman, 59 Mallard Drive. I would like to give a public comment on the CCHS parking lot article. I'm with Mothers Out Front, as you all know. Mothers Out Front is an organization focused on the swift and equitable transition to renewable energy for a livable climate for our children. The impacts of climate change are being felt with increasing frequency all over the world. It's not going to get better. It's not going to go away. Climate change needs to be woven into all decisions, big and small, that we make in our communities. I appreciate that and grateful that the joint committee is trying to balance the uncertain future of students in the face of climate change with the immediate needs of current students. The driving and parking situation at the high school is a source of stress for students and staff alike. In order to formulate a path forward to tackle this complicated issue, we need to understand the barriers to green routes to school as well as the baseline numbers for vehicle traffic at the high school. We at Mothers Out Front have been working with Dr. Hunter to obtain this information so that we can formulate a path forward. First, using a vehicle counter in partnership with the Concord Police Department to get baseline vehicle traffic throughout the day over a two-week time period. Second, we have conducted a parent survey to obtain a finer-grained understanding of how students commute to school and why they and their parents choose to drive. We received the results of the survey and the traffic data only this last Friday. So we haven't had a chance to really do a deep dive into the numbers, which is why I had asked to postpone, but I understand. So we can do some top-level assessments regarding traffic volume. Most traffic occurs during the week and the bulk occurs during Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So this may not be a five-day problem, but a three-day problem. So we should focus our efforts on these three days. Other surprising things we've encountered just looking at the data is that the vast majority of people that are driving to school are speeding. They're not abiding by the 20 mile per hour limit. And in some cases, it's very excessive. In one week, the max was 72 miles an hour and another was 55 miles an hour.
Where?
Yeah.
Where?
One was along the.
Witnessed it right there.
So granted, these are outliers, but something to consider. So it's a safety issue and not just for drivers, but for walkers and cyclists. We had 425 parents respond to our survey, so a really good number of folks. Again, we haven't had much opportunity to really parse through all the data because we had a lot of people write in suggesting and make some really insightful comments. It's a, oh, let's see. The high-level look shows that many students drive or are driven to school because of the need to find a way home. From the survey appears that the late bus is underutilized. And you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, I, you'll see my slides. I'm curious, we haven't talked, so I'm curious if she grabbed the same high-level template. That is one of mine, yes.
The vast majority responded said that the late bus was too long and its schedule was incompatible with the timing of after-school activities. So there could be some, you know, easily could work around there. Other quick highlights, students can't ride the bus or back to school when they have big bags. This is, and you brought that issue up at one meeting. This is particularly pertinent for students who live close to the schools and do not have a bus option. Students feel unsafe cycling and walking to school, especially in the walking part of Walden Street. There's really not a good way to get there. Late bus drop-offs are not near kids' homes. And it's just, again, a safety issue, it's dark. 175 respondents were willing to be contacted for further questions indicating the desire for folks to contribute to this process. So that's really terrific. In fact, there were some really great ideas and suggestions for improvements to lower the barriers to riding a bus. So some very quick examples that I just pulled out, like build a shed or room to house large bags, like especially hockey equipment. Building a shed is not that expensive. More efficient late bus routes, perhaps an adaptive bus route. There's all kinds of technologies out there, again, we haven't fully explored, that can be utilized. In particular, the late bus takes a very fixed circuitous route, which seems, you know, inefficient when there's only a handful of kids. They shouldn't, it should not have to go way out if there's no kids out there to drop off. More frequent late bus was a common comment. One parent suggested a GPS tracker be used with the late bus so students would know when and where it was. Overall, the first pass of the data indicates that there are several low-cost and rapid ideas for green routes to school that could and should be implemented before a parking lot expansion is considered. Based on these results, Mothers Out Front does not support a carte blanche parking lot expansion. It has been pointed out in more than one meeting and by, and by more than one committee member that you are thought leaders in this community and are raising thought communities, are thought leaders in our country and need to set an example. The right thing to do is not always the easiest thing to do. Yes, a parking lot expansion will alleviate stress temporarily. However, it doesn't solve the overall problem of traffic congestion, parking lot options, uh, but poor parking lot options, air quality, et cetera. If you build a bigger parking lot, more people will drive. The overarching goal should be to reduce the number of cars at CCHS. We at Mothers Out Front are happy and willing to continue working with the committee and other interested parties toward achieving this goal. This is the tip of the iceberg. We would love to be digging where it can be to these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lori, does the late bus route have more skeletons? Like in terms of the stop?
Yes.
Let's get to that one.
We can get to that in a minute.
Laura Davis?
So I don't have much to say to follow that up. I'm also with Mothers Out Front, Laura Davis, 330 Barfield Road. And I just wanted to say that I'm the liaison, leadership liaison for this committee for our group. I'm a liaison for the Climate Action Advisory Board. And this came up at their meeting last week. And one of the things that I wanted to stress is that there's so much opportunity for collaboration across the town. There are other groups that are working on these ideas of how we transform our transportation system. And so I would love, I, I think that the thing that I wanted to say is that you don't shoulder this alone. And there are lots of amazing resources within the town and town government. So I'd love to see greater collaboration between those two bodies in working on this issue because really, I mean, 30% of our, of our greenhouse gas emissions are from transportation in this town. We have very aggressive goals in terms of emissions reduction, 80% by 2050, which means that we really need to start thinking about how do we get, how do we significantly reduce the number of cars overall? And that's a, a town-wide issue that should have a working group around it that's beyond this, this committee because this is only a piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready in the minutes. Motion to accept the adjournment minutes from February 14. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a, Olive, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And for Concord?
Aye.
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 Choosing the liaison's reports.
I wonder if I might start with a, a note of sadness. And that is that the community lost a beloved educator yesterday, Phil Benincasa, known to legions of kids and moms and dads in this town. He was the principal of the Ripley School. He was the principal of the Lockwood School. Suffered courageously in his battle with pancreatic cancer. I'm really choked up. To, to remember Phil was to remember his serious intent around what happened in and around schools, how we are the temporary stewards of kids. We're serving with parents to develop as best we can. Wonderful people. Some other educators share those qualities, but I'm not sure another educator shares his joy of life, his sense of humor. And a laugh that was just appeal, I guess you'd call it, that would go down the hall. You'd know that Phil was in the building. Sharing his commitment to kids and his joy of teaching and learning. So it's a sadness that we express our sympathies to Jackie and to Phil's children and grandchildren. Everybody in town who loved him. I miss him.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to follow up with your part?
I actually wondered if I can go next because it's a very big item, not on the agenda tonight. So we've obviously been immersed in the coronavirus concerns. So I'm working very intimately with the Concord Board of Health and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. We are receiving information, as everyone else is, from the Governor's Office and also from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is a very evolving situation, there is no question of that. We do not have any cases currently in Concord or Carlisle, but I say that knowing it could change, given the rate at which seem, things seems to be spreading. So our work today has been multifaceted. Cleaning is certainly, certainly part of that work. We've been taking solid looks at all the high-traffic areas and then doing more in-depth cleaning on a more regular basis than usual. Messaging is clearly a big part of the process here. I have a set of messages that go out to the community pretty much daily right now and an alternate set of multiple daily messages going out to the staff. All of those messages include things relative to trips and travel, which I sit in this room and smile at all of you and say, "It's astonishing to me that we can spend this much time on trips and travel and no one's going anywhere this spring." As of this afternoon, we've now canceled, we canceled international last week at the Governor's Directive and this afternoon, we've canceled domestic travel at the Governor's Directive. So, wow. That's resulting in some pretty significant discussions with the travel agents and trying to make sure we're getting as much of families' money back as possible. That's turned into a statewide effort across the Superintendents Association and others to really try to advocate for families and kids who have a lot of money at stake here. A lot of unknowns still on how that's going to turn out. So other work is a lot of communication with individual families or staff or others who need guidance on exposures or potential exposures or how do I, what do I do in this situation, a lot of what-ifs and trying to give guidance on that. Right now, guidance has been that, you know, secondary contacts haven't really been an issue. If you've been directly exposed, there, those folks are in self-quarantine. Secondary contacts, not as much. That may be changing, as I said here, given the numbers that came out today and the state of emergency. So we're just really watching and trying to stay very, very attentive. Yesterday, we tried to get time with the kids to talk on what was happening. On behalf of me and Mr. Maschulow, sent an email to the high school students to sort of give them some direct information. But every, every teacher was asked to talk with the kids yesterday morning when they came in and just put it on the table and be sure. They had some basic age-appropriate facts and an opportunity to talk or share questions or anxieties. This other, other layer that I think we didn't totally understand was going to be part of this discussion is the, the need to be sure we're being respectful and thoughtful to each other. There's just turned into opportunities for disparaging inadvertent and unconscious, but disparaging comments about perhaps those of Asian descent or what's going to be the next group? I'm not sure, but I mean, I've heard from Biogen families worried about it happening to them. So we're trying to be very aware of that and very thoughtful that we're not allowing those kinds of negative talk to happen. We're already all got enough to think about that we need to be respectful and thoughtful with each other. So I am working really hard to be responsive to the community. So questions, please send them my way. There is a lot of discussion, I know, about whether schools should be open or not. All of the guidance to date has been to have school open until, or if we get to a community spread kind of situation. If they can track where, where it originated from, the guidance has been, we're just trying to slow it down by quarantines. If we get a community spread where they can't track it, that, that is my understanding of where the threshold might start to change, that discussion. We do know that staff and staff or students in local districts have had, have been diagnosed. Those directly connected with them have been self-quarantined and school open today is normal. So we're in pretty much uncharted territory, taking all the guidance we can get. None of these decisions I am making by myself, just so everyone's clear about that. And I guess the other good news today with a lot of requests from the superintendents to the commissioner, the commissioner was actually on the phone with us last week and will be again before this week's out. They have relaxed the 180 school day requirements so that we need to do 180 up until a certain point, so with no more than five makeup days. And once we hit that, we are not anywhere, again, accountable. So, and school cannot get out later than June 30th. So they're giving us a lot of breathing space there, which is essential. They've also given us a lot of breathing space with student attendance, which is part of the accountability formula normally. And as of March 1st, they aren't counting student attendance, which we were begging for because with quarantines and some families choosing to stay out. I mean, it was just all unraveling in front of us. So, um, so there's a lot more to come. I have a feeling we're in a pretty fluid mode here. Normal until we're not is the plan. And grateful for everybody's support. And I can't say enough about Concord's Board of Health and I'm actually going to Carlisle meeting Thursday to meet with their leadership, but they have been incredibly supportive and literally at my beck and call. It's been a true team effort to date. So we're glad for that. I'm curious to see how the girls are going to portray it in a minute. It's been fairly all-consuming here while the people around me try to run normalcy. And I think we're just in times we haven't experienced before. Trying to make sure everybody's safe while we balance, balance, you know, prudence and caution, so.
Now you and the town manager, the public health folks, a number of you are going to get together and respond to community questions in a couple of days.
Yes.
So we might want to direct people to the town of Concord homepage, ConcordMad.gov, because there's a link there if people have questions. You can pool them all together and try to be efficient about bringing public health answers and school answers to everybody.
A couple of other pieces that I've been getting questions about is the larger events. To date, we have only canceled the senior citizens St. Patrick's Day lunch on Saturday at the high school. That was probably one of the easier decisions, knowing CDC guidance for the last week has been to not gather seniors in one place. Today, we still don't have directives. The Board of Health is still looking at each event with me individually. We were leaning towards smaller-scale events still running and then big events where there's lots of external people coming in that are not normally together. This may all be changing as I say it, so we're really day-to-day on the large-scale events. What I've asked of the principals and the parent PTG presidents and anyone who's in charge is to give me the timeline you need so I make a thoughtful decision. You know, for example, you don't want to front a lot of money and then we cancel. So if there's, if I can know what those dates are, that's what we've been working with. I expect there might be some broader guidance over the next few days that makes it not quite such an individual Board of Health decision, but as of right now, it is. And Concord's considering us still essentially operating fairly normally with a lot of prudence and give everything a lot of thought and decide it's the best plan. So.
Dr. Hunter, what about students going to off, so sports and extracurricular activities, which may or may not be large groups, say?
They're all running normally as of right now.
Are there any AD level or discussions? I know Connecticut there are.
Yeah, they, I know, I know the ADs are talking a lot. I think they're strategizing the what-ifs, just like we've been doing, preparing for whatever those directives might be, according to my last conversation with Aaron Chancus.
Okay.
So there's a lot of, more planning going on, I think, expecting something might come into place.
Yeah, okay.
Do those discussions include games help and spectators?
I don't know the answer to that, probably. Probably, but.
They're mostly outside? I don't know if that changes it.
Asking a lot.
Yes, I.
A lot of stuff over about.
Yeah, I can't answer it too far on that because we haven't spoken too much on it. I think we're expecting some NIA guidance on that for the most part, so.
Yeah.
I know, so I'm curious.
Just thank you for all the time that you're putting into it because I know that on top of the full-time job that you have here, you're basically doing this almost full-time and that's, that's a lot. So thank you and also to all of the administration you are supporting and the teachers and staff.
Thank you.
Why don't I, you, you're a person, you're a leader.
Right, or you? Well, I, we were going to touch on some of the Corona-related topics, but I guess I'll start with the non-Corona-related stuff. I'm not sure if you guys heard, but this spring, we're starting the first unified track and field team.
Yes.
And I am so excited. I signed up for it because I meant for Pathways and I think it's just such a great opportunity. And I'm so excited that Mr. Reed, who's, I had as a gym teacher last year and is such a wonderful person and wonderful spirit to be around, is coaching it. So back to Corona. I will say there's, obviously for everyone, there's a lot of unknowns. And Dr. Hunter, I really do commend you for really trying to take this on as best as you can because there's no easy way to do it, there's no right way to do it because there's so many questions put at place where we don't know where this virus is going to be in a month or say even a year. And I think the big question is like, can we, can, I mean, some students are like, oh, can we just cancel school? Like, I don't want to go to school. But for me, and it's really tough from a student's perspective because I know SATs and ACTs and all those things are getting canceled because they don't want students together like one place, especially from a bunch of different towns all together. And then also with kids who are wanting, who are planning to go college visiting in April, they can't do that anymore. And it's, it's a tough time, I think, for anyone. Oh, I was also going to mention something about parking, so I'll just make it little. But based on the public comment about the, about being aware of our carbon footprint when it comes to the whole parking situation, we spoke about this in the Senate and someone made the suggestion of maybe having carpool spots, encouraging kids to carpool. Maybe those spots can be at the front of the school because obviously those are the preferred spots. They could be also like less expensive. And I understand that'll probably be not the first thing to do at the moment because of everything going on, but it was just an idea that brought, was brought up by Congress.
Thank you.
So more, I guess, like what the student perspective of everything happening is, I think just like people aren't stressed about possibly getting it, they're more stressed about what would happen if there is an outbreak in the school. Like it's like questions about like switching to online school for 2B, sorry, what's going on for 2B, sorry, like what would happen, like school events being canceled. I know people are asking if prom is going to be canceled or things like that are just not going to get to happen. So I think that stress is really, it's coming from just like the unknown that, that people know there isn't a know because there's no way to know yet. But just like, there's no, I think people have shaped by prom just yet. Is that going to cancel? Is that going to, is that going to happen? So it's like people does not really know like what's happening yet.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I remember with snow days, people were like, oh, can we start doing online? So it's like a, a hot like school day, sorry. And save like a huge wizardry breakout and I don't know the whole thing about that, but I know a lot of colleges have transfer online school.
The superintendent, so you'll remember, just frame where we are in that discussion. You'll remember there was a, an option to solicit a program to cover snow days. Concord, we, the region and CPS and Carlisle Public School participated, have plans in place that were meant to allow for virtual snow day kinds of activities. The commissioners, after a group, a year of study, decided there were some equity issues there and suspended the program pending this June. In Carlisle, you've actually executed, as far as I know. And we never did because I couldn't see getting it all up and running and then undoing it. When asked at last week's conference call, the commissioner still has a lot of concern about the equity piece. I heard my colleagues loud and clear saying if we were going to have extensive school days out, we were going to want that option and want it to count. So he assured us there would be more information this week and I think the colleges have probably set the bar pretty high. So I think we're going to wait and see. Relaxing the, it's interesting now because without the 180-day requirement being so tight, we actually don't need him to say they count the same way. We just need to decide what business as usual it looks like. So I'm still processing all of that because that's fresh off of a 3 o'clock call. That if, the counting part actually changes things a bit, that perhaps there's just local decisions to be made now. So I'm really curious over the next few days how this all really looks. I think that said, we're in, especially at the one-to-one level of grades six through 12, it's fairly straightforward. Elementary is a little trickier, but that's okay because we don't want them on computers all day long. We want other options for them too. So more to come on that. I think we're all in agreement that if school's going to end up out for extended periods of time, we don't want great loss of learning and we will get a plan for that once we know more of what's going to happen.
I think another thing is like the, you know, telling, we've been telling kids to stay home when they feel sick and all, but I think it's often hard for kids to stay, stay home in school because like teachers can try to get accommodated, but like missing one day of school, you do end up missing a lot.
I know.
So I think it's kind of hard for kids, if you have like a small hole to go to, stay home, but I'm going to miss so much, like I'm going to have so much work to make out. stay home, but I'm gonna miss so much, like I have so much work to make out, I'm gonna get back.
Really, my rule of thumb to everyone has been, if you have a fever, you must stay home and call the doctor and try to figure out what's going on. Because that's really the, the threshold, the rest can be a whole bunch of other stuff, but the fever, you've gotta, you've got to. So if that's helpful.
Yeah.
That's been a lot of discussion, who should be here and who shouldn't when they're sneezing and coughing. This gets all really tricky, because you can really quickly get into people's civil rights and privacy.
Right.
We're trying to balance all of those lines.
I think another thing about A and R juniors, and I would consider us as like the overachieving students. And, um, in my opinion, if school were to be canceled, I would like an opportunity to somehow have like an on, like an online thing. I think that's especially true with students who are taking, um, an AP.
Yes.
Because and if, if the AP exam gets postponed or whatever, and I know there's just so much question probably with the college board and what that's gonna look like too. Because obviously if we were to miss school, we were, um, AP courses move super, super fast. We miss like probably, if we were to miss two weeks, we miss two units.
Right.
And if I don't learn electricity enough, I don't learn magnetism in my AP physics class, and then I go to take the physics exam. I don't think I will perform that well. And just stuff like that. And I wanted to also touch on your point of, um, students being respectful to one another. I am Chinese, I haven't personally experienced students kind of ridicule me about being Chinese because of the whole coronavirus thing. If you ask me, I do think it's a little insensitive for students to say, I just want someone to get Corona so we don't have to go to school. Or I just wanna get Corona so we don't have to go to school. And it's not from the perspective of me being a Chinese person, it's from the perspective of having a friend who has cystic fibrosis and the threat to Corona to her is much higher than for someone who, like me, who has what I know of like pretty decent health. And also if someone were to bring it home, and someone in their family ha, is going through chemotherapy, what that means for them. And I think that sort of insensitive manner, manner is really hard to take care of, especially when you have a building full of teenagers. But I appreciate that, um, that effort is being put forth in all rounds of the coronavirus, not just okay, so like, do we cancel school, but everything about it.
Thanks. Very well said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls, thanks for being here.
Anything else?
Just, I think there's also, like what you mentioned, like trips, and people just like, are we gonna get money back from that, but then there's people, I know people are still freaking that out, but I think that's that's been of our asset, I think, that we don't know what's happening with our money yet.
That's because we're trying to make sure we get back as much as we possibly can.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's probably gonna take a little bit to play out, I think.
Yeah, I feel like it's very unfair to you and probably all the other superintendents who are dealing with someone like this, because it's not our fault that Corona is stopping us from leaving the country.
No, it's not.
And the fact, I, I was supposed to go on the Canada Earth Science trip, and I was obviously bombed that I got canceled, but in the end, it's not anything, it was completely out of my control, and I do understand it's understandable. It's understandable to me, even though my dad's like, well, when you think about it, Canada is just another state of the United States. But in Canada.
I assure you, I had that discussion with someone about, was international Canada or not? The question was.
No, it's Canada.
It's not relevant in courses.
It wasn't relevant by three o'clock today, but I knew, I'm sure you last week did.
Yeah. Like Canada has free healthcare, so.
But I tried, I tried, girl.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I bet, it's definitely a hard fight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the message is there, we're working on it.
Yeah.
And part of why you don't know the financial piece of it is because we're trying so hard to get as much back as possible, and I think we're seeing vendors try to get a little creative with us here, because in some cases, they already, they put out money, so
They're losing it, exactly.
There's a big domino effect here that's trying to get sorted out.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. David.
Also, one more. Were there other liaisons on the course before? Okay.
Correspondence?
Correspondence, I have a few to note. Um, we've got several emails regarding, uh, facilities use fees, mostly from basketball parents. There were ten at last count that I saw. Pretty much all of them asked for the same two things, which, um, were to, oh, I don't have that one in front of me. Um, which were to not charge fees for, um, for nonprofit organizations such as Concord, uh, Carlisle Youth Basketball. Um, and to eliminate the practice of charging for custodian time for nonprofits if the custodian is already scheduled to work. So those are the two things, exactly. So two, of each of them, I have responded that this is on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, and we look at it. Um, we also got a separate email with information and an opinion regarding use of technology in schools. I think everybody's received that, so. Uh, that's it for correspondence, that's all I have.
Thank you.
So, um. Is it warrant articles?
Yes.
Yes. So I have a presentation that, um, we can either start with or follow up with, depending on what order of discussion you wanna have tonight. What I did was, actually while I spent a little time on a Jared, was that we've tried to take last year's presentation and update it to be reflective of just the parking lot, without the roadway. I did try to add some information as to what's gone on over the last year. I've included a high-level takeaways that I spotted out of some of the survey data. We also surveyed the junior and senior class as to their mode of transportation, so I'll get into all of that. Um, and then this is really a document in progress, so we're open, I'm open to feedback. Last year, this presentation became part of the coffees and other environments where the discussion went out to the community. So we're really here to just give you a look at it and answer questions and talk through what's in it. And then ultimately, tonight, there is a vote here to not, I'll beg your patience while we explain why it says you're voting to not move the article, you've already voted to put it on the warrant. So you can't vote affirmatively again, you have, you would have to vote not to, because otherwise the other vote stands. So that's later in the regional agenda. All right.
I think it'd be good to sit.
Yeah. Erin's gonna let me sit and flip from over there, which I'm grateful for, so. So this is a request to approve funds for the design and construction of one hundred and four parking spaces at the high school. This will look familiar to you, where the parking lot is actually placed, down next to the landfill, still allowing room for a track. I'm gonna do a real high-level view of things I think you're quite familiar with, you would do this in a different slower mode probably, with people who don't have all the information. Thanks, Erin. This is summarized information as to the history of how we got here. Timeline as to moving into the new school, the old lots still being in use. New lot coming online, remediation starts. And then we have a hundred and thirty-five fewer spaces than when the new building was in place, without considering the informal parking that was happening and the stress that's resulting. This graph, our graph shows the comparison of where spaces are and where they were. I'll let you just sort of spot the definitions there, obviously, the old spaces had up near the, uh, by the turf fields, the student lot, you know, the radio station, BD, front. And now we have the main lot, the hundred spots up at the turf field, the loop road, the side roads, and the loading dock. So the delta there is a hundred and thirty-five spaces, we're proposing a hundred and four additional. And since two thousand and fifteen, um, and some of this is per the folks at the table at the time, so we're we're storytelling based on those who were there when it happened. School committee urging a wait-and-see approach initially. We did move the faculty up to the top lot, which was definitely underutilized in two thousand and seventeen, we moved them up there mid-year. We tried a failure of an attempt to rent from BD, which didn't really make us good neighbors, so we've suspended that. We did number the spaces in an attempt to make sure kids were both assigned a spot, so that the first come, first served mode was eliminated, but also so we couldn't force it. Um, we've tried a carpool challenge, one of the student groups ran that. Since then, this year, we've really tried to look at what we're doing, and much of what came out of the district sustainability committee discussions was, we just needed more information to know what was gonna be a helpful effort to try to remediate some of the, the need. So as you heard, we've been partnering with mothers out front, we surveyed all the juniors and seniors as to how they got to school and why. Surrounded the parents, the response was fantastic. Very fresh data, and also, as you heard, as of Friday. We are out collecting data at different times during the day to assess empty spots. We, we hear a lot of feedback about a number of empty spots during the day. For example, we did it two days last week, twice each day, and yes, there were maybe approximately forty spots empty. We then cross-checked that against the attendance list, and twenty-five of those kids are absent. So there's part of your answer, the others have open campus and on and on. So I don't have a good answer to that, other than to say, yes, there are days where there's some space available, but for the most part, when we look at the data and we compare it, it's based on kids not in school that day. So when you get to some of the suggestions, hopefully we can help to alleviate a little bit of that by kids sharing spots. We've been collecting traffic data, as you heard, we're meeting with some of the local biking leaders to expand that usage and installing more bike racks. We've been really talking with the kids, which I think has been maybe a missing piece up until this year, to better understand the needs and why. Um, and we are enforcing, and I feel like this becomes a no-win pretty quick, but the placards and enforcement. I often hear that we need to hold them more accountable and use the spots. And then there's definitely some hard feelings when we hold them accountable and start talking about towing or tickets or any of that kind of thing. So we're trying to walk that really fine line to not add to their stress, because we're but we do have occasionally some offenders who are not where they should be, and we do need to be able to address that. So that's, that's the negative side of all the discussions, probably.
Excuse me, boy?
Yeah.
You just speak to placard, what do you mean?
Yeah, that's the thing I hate from their mirror.
Okay.
With their space number on it, so it should match the number on the space.
It's one and the same with enforcement.
Yes, yes, it's, yes. Um, so the results, this was a really important data point to me, as we surveyed the juniors. Eighty-three of two hundred and fifty-five juniors, which is a good portion of the class, because we did do it during the school day. Eighty-three of them currently drive and do not have a parking space. So I'm convinced we're not increasing driving, we're trying to accommodate what's already happening. They're parking at Laurel Street, they're parking, they're at Alcott, they're all over.
It's always ways there.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they're getting there early to get the spots, so, um, that is negating some of our late start time discussion, so. So that was an interesting point. Consistently, we hear from the kids that they're driving because they're in sports clubs, jobs, they drive so they can sleep a little longer, the schedules don't fit. It's more efficient for time. As Linda mentioned, this does breed some study, uh, the late buses are, it was a drop-down menu, so they had choices, and I, I'm interested when we aggregated to see what the thing that pops up the most is, but it's scanning it, too long, too early, too late. So it's just not fitting. The one data point I did take a minute to hit the formula on and get the average of, because we asked families to self-report how many trips they're making to CC in a week. And just with a quick Excel formula hit, you can quickly get to six trips per family. Some of them were ten, because they're doing it twice a day every day, and some of them were a couple, depending on the schedule, so. There's a lot of dragging going on, there absolutely is. Twenty spots per day, like I said, are typically for student absences, so hopefully we can consolidate and figure out how to manage that. So that leads us to our plans, a bunch of which are plans and not actualized yet, because we really did use this year to re-group on some of what we might try. Some level of a share a spot option to incentivize multiple students, so maybe it's like, drop the fee and put them in a convenient space, and then they wanna share a spot, we need to work all those details out. We do wanna review the late buses and what's fiscally an option for us, to see if we can allow more kid, you know, more kids are able to ride those buses. Um, we've been talking with the bike leadership, we've about hosting different biking events, promote alternate ways to school, although you've heard some of those challenges tonight too. Continuing discussions with the student leaders, I, again, I think it's pretty important, and we keep saying, there's no one not on board with sustainability goal. We're trying to figure out how it's parking and the goals maybe, rather than parking or the goals. Um, continuing to partner with the community groups, I am at the Climate Action Advisory Board, April fifteenth, to talk on this article, so we, we talk with those other groups all the time. I think the partnership this year with actually working together in libraries out front is a great model, we'd love to engage more action step-oriented. And then, oops, did I hit them all? Yeah, I did all the sustainability groups, which meet with me regularly at the Sustainability Committee. So the impact, and I'll skim through this, because we've talked a lot about all of this. Students arriving extra early to get spots, lack of visitor spaces, which is an ongoing chronic problem. Large community events are insufficient, we park, we're not available to parking. Uh, continued stress, students and families, and just this huge distraction and angst among all of us who try to manage this. And the families that are impacted, and the kids that are impacted. So just a reminder of all the work the school committee's done on this, so it's just clear, we haven't just thought to do this without a lot of discussion. Campus Advisory Committee formed in two thousand and seventeen after the landfill project was done. Campus Oversight Committee formed in two thousand and eighteen and took those priorities to another level. Gales Associates was engaged, um, twenty eighteen, nineteen, to conduct a feasibility study. And then I also formed the Campus Sustainability Committee, um, to parallel and complement all of the discussions we're having about the campus and other things. So this is the summarized version of the article and our history here. Last year, we brought a combined article for the road and the parking lot, it failed by twelve votes in Concord, it never made it to Carlisle. This is a statement you can wordsmith with us, based on your takeaways as a group, um, believing that stress reduction is important enough goal to bring forward the article again. And just summarized of where we are in terms of finances. Gales proposed a hundred and four spots with four electric charging stations and lighting, estimated cost of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, which has a lot of contingency in it because of the complicated drainage and other factors. And we'll just say, if, you know, we need a design to know what the actual cost is going to be, and since we haven't spent the money to do that yet, we need to do that as first step to solidify what that number is. It will not impede the track, we've been very sure of that with our work with Gales, that there's room for a track there. And it would not impede future development of the amenities building, that we also know has been part of the discussion, and incomplete on the high school campus. And do you have numbers to plug in?
I do. So I have.
I'm sorry, I guess we didn't get the final topic to the board here.
Sorry about that. So Concord's share.
No, sorry, I missed, I didn't give her the final one, because I'm pretty distracted. He's gotta give him a minute.
So if you look at the first, uh, the first bullet, Concord's share is, for the first year, assuming that we go out for borrowing in FY twenty-two, it's a ten-year borrowing, is approximately eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. And for Carlisle, it's twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one. And then based on, um, the median tax bill, it would be approximately twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents increase for Concord and fifteen dollars and five cents for Carlisle per year.
Did you repeat that last number?
Sure. So for Concord, it was twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents, and for Carlisle, fifteen dollars and five cents.
Sorry, we'll get the slide cleaned up before, we're gonna post this to the, um, agenda after tonight's meeting, we'll be sure the numbers are there when we do that. So I think that's where we're at, and hoping for discussion, comments, feedback, questions.
I just had a quick question. Those charging stations, would you have to rip out the pavements if you were doing that without the parking lot?
So the charging stations are part of the plan for the parking lot, so they would be built all at once. If we're gonna put them in somewhere else, we are gonna have to lay, lay some infrastructure to do that. Which is why we haven't put them somewhere else, because we figured we'd wait one more time to see if this goes forward or not.
So you basically have to do it at the same time?
That would be the plan.
Or change locations?
Yes, if this doesn't move forward again, I think we're gonna have a serious conversation about proposing some other options to you that would require some infrastructure work, but right now it's built into this, this lot.
Because that's an additional added cost on something that can be completed at the same time, you're doing the cost for charging station and promoting
How many charger stations of?
A larger car.
Four.
Yeah, we probably need like twenty.
Is the infrastructure really, infrastructure really to add without digging them?
I need more anyway.
I would think so, yes, just like we're talking about at the bus depot, you lay infrastructure for broader scale. And then start with whatever number of actual stations, so. Yes, I think to your point, you build the infrastructure.
You need for more and start.
It's a bigger conversation. Yeah.
So we can either, I think what I prefer we do is we talk about this when we get to the vote.
Sure, sure.
Um, so, uh, moving on, uh, we have a vote, it's donation of bike racks to CCHS.
Here.
I have a deal.
That's to CCHS. I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee vote to accept the donation of two bike racks from the Umbrella Arts Center.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to acknowledge Umbrella, the Emerson Umbrella, and Richard Follender, who's long been a supporter of self-powered transportation.
been a supporter of self-powered transportation in concrete.
I'll just point out, this is a great example of community collaboration, the fact that they didn't need them anymore in their.
Yes, and that came because Richard reached out to us, came to the district sustainability meeting, brainstormed all sorts of ideas and then said, oh, the umbrella is not in need of those anymore, would you like them?
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great looking, too.
Yeah, they're fun, they're a lot of fun. Nice color there.
They fit in right at school.
Exactly.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to reapprove the fiscal year twenty-one approved budget. Any details on this?
Sure. So because we use E and D as a, as a revenue source, we do not certify our E and D until like, we don't get that number back until January-ish. So because we use E and D as a revenue source, technically when it's not certified, it's zero, you don't have any of that. So to be in line with the IRS, we need to revote this budget once now that we have E and D certified at four percent.
And nothing has changed, it's the exact same budget, we're just.
Correct.
Revoting now that we have the certified number.
Yeah, and this is something truthfully, unless we stop using E and D as a revenue source, we'll have to do it every year because if we were going to get E and D certified before we vote the budget, we would have to have E and D certified in August and that's, it's just not real estate.
Okay. I move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee to revoke the FY twenty-one adopted budget in the amount of thirty-four million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Do we need to read the motion?
Just the motion language.
Okay.
That's the motion language here.
That's it.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So now we are at the. Okay, yeah, why don't you explain this?
Sure. Because the district is borrowing monies, by law, we need to vote this at least seven days before town meeting to authorize the borrowing. So the full motion would need to be ready.
And this is to authorize the borrowing?
For the E and D.
For the design and construction of parking lot if that parking lot plan is approved at both times.
Correct.
Right, so we're just providing for that borrowing in case.
Correct.
And this is just region, so, ready? I move that for the purpose of paying the costs of design and construction of a parking lot on the district's campus, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related there. Two, their being hereby is authorized under and pursuant to Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended, the incurring of debt on the full faith and credit of the district by the issuance and sale at one time or from time to time of bonds or notes in an aggregate principal amount of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Any premium received by the district upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And that within seven days from the date on which this vote is adopted, the Secretary B and hereby is instructed to notify the Board of Selectment of each of the member towns of this district as to the amount and general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by Chapter seventy-one, Section sixteen D of the General Laws and by the District Amendment.
Agreement. District agreement.
Agreement, sorry, district agreement.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm trying to repeat the whole thing again.
Second.
Thank you. So any discussion on this?
And just to be clear, it's a not-to-exceed number.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, we will move on to the discussion of whether basically this, the motion will be to not move the CCRSD warrant article about the parking lot, because I've already put a two in it. So can I have a motion of that effect? That we would not move?
I move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School District withdraw the warrant article for the construction of a parking lot, an additional parking lot at Concord Carlisle High School.
Sorry, second, I'll second that for discussion, yeah.
From both, from, from both, for both towns.
Both areas.
Both warrants.
Oh, both communities.
Oh, both communities, they're pulling both warrants.
Right, as in not moving in both towns.
Right.
I will second for discussion.
Okay. Discussion.
I think the issues remain the same articulated by mothers up front. I personally feel that we aren't doing enough to, you know, solve the problem in a more creative way. And some of those are in the slides.
When I went by the high school at two-twenty today, I did what many of you have done and that is look at the situation. And it's not a new situation for any one of us, it's been going on for years. Looking at Laurel Street and looking at Hubbard Street, it was pretty conclusive, we need a parking lot or some other solution. And so I do think it deserves a few more minutes here about other solutions. I remain concerned that perhaps we have not done our due diligence preparing for bringing this forward to the two towns and the two town meetings. So I'm having a difficult time with this. I want to discuss it, I want to hear from you, but I'm not encouraged that we're doing surveys now. If, if we're relying on folks to do fact-finding for us now, it's a real indictment on, on us, on me, on us. I haven't heard from the high school administration on this. I think our superintendent has done extraordinary work, but I think there are assistant principals and de-principals that probably attend to this if it's the dire problem that it is. So I'm wondering where, where those data sources are. I think it's lovely we got a bike rack, but I, I consider that an embarrassment too, that we're accepting a bike rack from Emerson Umbrella in two thousand and twenty when we knew this was a problem in two thousand and fifteen. I understand that the students and families pay three hundred dollars for a parking place. I understand that that money relates in some way, shape or form to some kind of enforcement, but we're told by our student council representatives that without much warning, announcements come over the PA saying, go park your cars correctly, upsetting the, the high school for a period of time. I don't know if that's how accurate that is, but it's distressing that we have one-off occasional alarms when we need a real systemic solution. So I would like to know what is happening with those investments and what would happen with additional investments, where, where the towns to build another hundred-plus spaces? I think enforcement is a stressor, but gosh, non-enforcement is a stressor too, so I think this committee could perhaps know more about where are the wins and losses around enforcement efforts? If we have eighty-three students in our junior class driving with, without a spot, those are Laurel Street, Hubbard Street cars presumably, how many of those students were turned away from a lottery? How many of them chose to park there? I, I don't know, I don't know. But legally, they can, they can choose to forego a three hundred dollar fee and park there, so. So, and then finally, I'd love to know a little bit more about our, our lottery and I think people have spoken very well to the late bus situation as being a potential contributor that now is not a contributor to, to the solution the way it could be. So there's still a lot of things out there that, that I'm unclear on. And I'm not pointing the finger at Dr. Hunter or Mr. Mistrullo or my colleagues on the school committee, we're all in this together. But I'm worried that we haven't set the table, so to speak, well enough for town meeting and if we have, let's spend a few minutes and convince ourselves we've done that.
I think Laurie had a couple of answers.
Well, there's just a couple of things I thought maybe worth clarifying. The juniors have not been invited to the lottery for the last three years. Not, not even an option, so.
Less, no, twenty years.
Just clarifying that.
Good, thank you.
I can't speak before I got here, I just know they have not been invited. The first year I was here, we did try to invite them and then didn't have enough spaces for them and that was worse than not inviting them. The enforcement is a mixed bag, so occasionally, first thing in the morning during the announcements, when they do the pledge and other things like that, Mr. Hernandez might get on and say, if you're not in the right spot, you need to move the car. Now, the reason we're doing that is trying not to tow kids, so we're trying to give them a chance to respond before we do that. So that occasionally happens. They know he's out there all the time, they're, we're trying to give them notice before we do something more significant, so. Just wanted to clarify a little bit of those pieces, wait till you ask the others, but.
And is he out there just as a presence primarily? Okay.
And monitoring where they're parking and all of their other activities?
Yeah, good, good, okay.
Yes, so I'm also here to learn about what actions we have and to use the parking spots that we have available to our students the best we, we can, so there were some good options, we'll see where the technology can take us and what's, what's options can be done. But I had a first question for our superintendent, are there any, to get a little bit more feedback and understanding, what happens to students' parking? Are they creating hazards? Are they creating stress for Concord residents when they cannot find parking? Is there anything coming up in the foreseeable future with development on, near those streets where our students will not be welcomed? And we're not, you know, just pushing the camp down the road, okay, that's fine, but would that create problems for our students as well and add to, to, to those issues? I, I, you know, no one wants to see a ticket.
Right, so.
From Concord police.
As of right now, that is not the case. I will admit to having concern that should the residents there complain, things could change. As of right now, that's not the case. I don't, there's nothing that says it couldn't change though, so it is a worry of mine, just because it does congest those, those streets and they're, essentially Laurel becomes barely too lane passable, so.
No winter, there's.
Yeah, so right now it's moving on.
When I was involved, there were some very bad years. I have not heard that feedback from you or, I mean, really bad.
Right, I was gonna say.
People peed cars and, you know, so.
Oh, no, I'm, I think I was answering differently.
No, it was Laurel Street, the situation was.
Yeah, no, we haven't heard that.
It's so bad.
No, there seems to be some patience and acceptance of it.
Because people were really parking on both sides sometimes and it was unpassable. So I think the students have showed good, you know, respectfully parking in Laurel and Hubbard and not miss parking, I should.
Yeah, no, I think that's true and I, but just to add to what you're both saying, in years past, I think before you were here Laurie, I do remember years where there were not just threats, but actually, I mean, the, the police cracking down on parking more there because it was a nuisance to the neighborhood. So I feel like it's something that's kind of been, like, the goal that's coming waves a little bit, right now it's settled, but to me, I feel like, no, that doesn't mean it's always gonna be settled, we need to be aware that parking in neighborhoods like that can create issues.
I don't know why it was, why it was the way it was, I don't know.
Right.
In another community, I, I was there when people parked on the streets near school for drop-off, it was an elementary school, and three or four houses turned over and the calls started going to the police and within six months, there were signs up all over the place, not parking.
Right.
It only takes a couple of houses.
Couple house sales.
Turned over and all of a sudden, the police are inundated, voicemails inundate the business. Certainly, we can't control the parking on Laurel Street.
And I've noticed that the students are crossing at a point where there's a lot of traffic coming to this school, is, do we have a plan to make sure that, you know, everything is well till there's an accident, till a kid gets hit, hit by a vehicle, by maybe another student and then everyone starts thinking, why didn't we do something about this, right?
I'll, I'll say that that's important for walkers, for neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's a frequently crossed street, could people walk into Alcott, so no matter what, if we remove, if we built a parking, we have to be sure that's a safe crosswalk.
Either way.
Yes, I mean, so, you know, that's, it is, I was gonna ask, we, thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, why can't we lower that to twenty? I don't care, we're twenty-five, I mean, Concord's twenty-five all the way around, I don't know why we have it higher in front of school. So that's just, no matter what, I think we could do it, see if that whole street's safer.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, so. So there was a, a, a number calculation, right? We have eighty-three students that are currently parking off, off campus, so twenty of them sometimes would be able to park on campus. Is there more students that are interested in getting parking spots?
I'm pretty sure all the eighty-three would want a spot, if we could figure out how to do that.
And it's gonna go up.
Which would be the, the lot.
Next level.
Yeah, it'll, it'll grow as the late spring goes by, they would get their licenses, yeah, that's what happens over the junior year.
So I, um, I've been living this for, since we opened the building, as a committee member. I do believe that we've made efforts throughout the years to address this. I've heard very few ideas, I think, that haven't been considered before. You know, sharing is a, an interesting approach, it's, you know, a form of carpooling without us asking kids to carpool, which I think is, I'm concerned about that approach. I think it would be interesting if we could get a read between now and town meeting on how many kids might opt for a shared pass. I'm not, I'm not optimistic about that. I don't think it'll cover eighty-three parking spaces. The, likewise on the bus routes, there's an expense to adding buses or changing the routes and who gets to change the route if we have a variable route based on the kids who are on the bus? Inevitably, somebody's not gonna be seen and, you know, they're gonna be on the bus when it gets back to the bar. And that's not gonna go over well. The, you know, so I, I just, I am, we've had eighty-three cars, eighty-three kids parking off campus a day. Maybe there will be more, I don't think this is really a case of if you build it, they will come, we've got a pretty sort of, you know, we've, we've got a pretty good beat on seniors and only a certain number of juniors have licenses. You know, it's not like sophomores are gonna start driving. And I assume most, if not all, of the teachers other than Peter are driving school. And so I'm, you know, I, I, I love bike racks, we live in New England, four months out of the year, there's usually snow on the ground and it's dark when kids are coming to and going to school, they're not gonna be riding, riding bikes in the middle of the winter. So I'm still of the mind that we should, we should move this, I think we, we did our, we've done our homework in the past. I remind you again, this failed by twelve votes last year on the third night that people would have come to town meeting with the expectation of voting on school articles. I think it's, I would like to analyze the data better that came from the survey. I think it's, uh, I would like to analyze the data better that came from the survey. We don't have to change our opinion whether to move this or not. Right now, we have until town meeting. So, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of this. I'm likely to, I'm unlikely to change my mind on, based on what I've heard between now and town meeting, so. As much as I would like to think that there was a solution to this that didn't require us to build a parking lot and it would reduce the issues that I see, which are stress, safety, from a sustainability standpoint. I think we're driving, we're having more trips to school because of the lack of parking than we would be creating, as we pointed out, these kids are already driving. And the ones that would if they had a parking space on campus may be getting driven to and from school. So, that's an extra trip a day. So, I think nothing's changed in my mind. I think it's time to do this.
I just wanna say that, sorry, moving forward with this article doesn't mean that we should stop working on all the other solutions and promoting sustainability and looking at, you know, how we can, um, do this better. Can share parking spots, because there is a need even for visitors to have parking. Anytime that I went to school, it was always a problem finding, finding parking. I had an angry senior leaving me a note because unfortunately I parked. Who knew that they leave, you know, when you don't have a senior yourself? You don't know, you're oblivious, you don't understand that they leave during the days, they don't come home.
Come back and need their spot again.
I felt terrible, I absolutely felt terrible.
Tell them not to leave, that'll teach them that.
Do you have a quick idea on something we might do to enforce? Which would be, you know, you get a warning the first time you do something, park in the wrong spot. Second time, you lose your privilege for a week and if you violate that week off, you lose your pass. Third time, it's a month and same thing.
But most schools do have a clear policy.
Or third, you lose the pass.
We don't really have a policy like that, do we?
Not as crystal clear as it could be.
And I'm very concerned that after these, this many years, management ideas are coming from the school committee.
I, I agree, I think.
Well, I think there have been every.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
My whole part of management idea.
We're never, Mike is there, but there was no, it was sort of like toe, toe, toe or, you know, there was no.
Toe, that's a good, that's a good.
Well, juniors are pretty, they, you know, a kid that is in stress getting to school and has been late numerous times because they can't find a parking spot, I can tell you they will park anywhere they can and worry about getting a call from Mr. Jancas.
Jancas, no.
Jancas, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hernandez.
Oh, oh, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Hernandez calls, um, to move your vehicle, you're going to be told. So, the kids are, they understand the repercussions, but, you know, they will be taking those chances because on the other side, they, they don't want to have too many situations.
Yeah, I, I just wanna weigh in a little bit on the management part. We are actively managing. I will say that when we tow a car, we essentially have waged war with the family and we do that very slowly and thoughtfully because I assure you, but it's not well received. And so, that's the challenge with the accountability. We're trying to not sever relationships with parents and kids over a parking space while we try to enforce it. So, it's that tricky balancing act. We can certainly put a tight policy in and we'll just really tighten up and, and do it. I just don't think it solves the bigger problem, so.
There's lots of options, I'm not opposed to sharing.
Not bringing this space, space has definitely helped the enforcement because that was not the case in the parking.
Yeah, you're correct.
So, now, kids, they know, yeah.
To the, uh, this, I mean, I'm responding to things people are bringing up as issues. I don't think we should, I think we should have enough parking for the kids who can legally drive to school and would like to do it. And it's, I'm only bringing up enforcement issues because that seems to be something people are looking for as a reason to say, okay, well, you've done your homework. I, I think we have done the things over the years that make sense. I am just responding to things people are bringing up as if this was a newfound problem.
And I, well, I just wanted to respond to some of the things that I haven't put anything out here yet to several of the points that have come up, to just go through the list. Efforts so far, I know that's been brought up, and some have said you don't think there are enough. I think there have been significant efforts already. And if you look over the course of the, really five years, five years since we opened the school, and especially in the last three, really the first two, there wasn't that much done. In the last three years, there have been more efforts. The numbering of spaces was huge. I mean, enforcement, when we're talking about enforcement, I do think we asked the administration to increase enforcement, probably, what, a year ago or more, and, and they have. And I think, and I don't think we should sit here and, and criticize how they've increased the enforcement. I think we asked them to do that and they have. Um, and the fact that they're doing it in a sensitive way, kind of working with families first to try to be flexible and give that message before they tow, I think is as sensitive as you can be. I, I think that is thoughtful enforcement. So, sure, but like, well, I said, maybe there's, there are other ways we could do some of these differently. But I, I just wanna point out that I think there has been work done. I have seen significant work on this. The work that's gone on in the past year that Laurie just talked about, working with mothers out front, executing the surveys, thinking about new ideas to execute next year, I think that's all really important. I think it's valuable and I think we need to acknowledge the time and efforts that have, that have gone into that. Even if we do get the parking lot, I think a lot of these are still important so that we can continue to decrease driving where possible and make it more efficient. But I also think that it's not, all of these together aren't going to resolve the problem.
I don't know.
Because each of these is not a big enough, none, none of those is gonna affect a big enough number to really make a difference.
We really hope it's, I don't think, we haven't tried, I, I don't know, because we know. Because we haven't really tried any of these things.
We were carpooling, by the way, this, this whole year because kids themselves were, took upon themselves, because I, I, I know, I have a senior. So, um, they were filling out the applications and they were saying who they're going to be driving to school with and their, their applications were put ahead of others. So, students themselves were, were, were doing this year to have a better chance of getting that parking spot as a senior. So, my kid, for example, drives three kids, it's three of them in the car coming from Carlisle. So, it's all, it's been, you know, I mean, even kids themselves, I, I, I think we don't give them enough credit. They are thinking, they, they probably are much more, they are thinking about sustainability and the future of our planet a lot more than, you know, than you, sometimes you see adults, um, think. So, we should give the kids the credit where, where it's due, you know, just because we don't, we don't.
And that's basically.
We've been talking about this for over half an hour.
Thanks.
So, if there's some things to be said that we haven't said before, please say them, but let's try to remember.
Well, there's, there's, there's a reason that we're spending a lot of time on this.
Yes.
There's a lot of reasons for spending a lot of time on this. If I heard Linda and Laura correctly, they would agree with the people around this table that this is a problem that needs to be solved. Also, if I heard them correctly, there are moves that we can make that we haven't made and we would be, uh, well advised to, to make them. One idea was about a carpool and I'm assuming, and you've said it well, carpooling's happening now just because there's a, a practical and a financial incentive already. And then if you sweeten it with preferred, preferred location, you've done something else. At the risk of spending too much time on this, I think I, I do wanna echo what you said. We, we, we haven't tried this. What I haven't heard is how this problem is exactly the same or at all lesser than it was in the past. And, you know, we're relying on mothers out front to get our data for us.
Oh, can I just clarify that? That was a, that was a, that was an offer? We have a plan in the Sustainability Committee to do these surveys. That was an offer that was suggested, we certainly could have done that. I just wanna be sure we're clear on the how different partnerships happen, that nobody's abandoning the jobs we think we have to, to do this work. I just need to say that because I'm not sure, and out of context, it might be perceived differently. So, I just wanna say, all this was willing and collaborative and really supportive and meant to be collaborative problem solving, not that we went asking for somebody to do something.
Well, and it is, and it is, but it's still telling that we're relying on other sources.
Yeah, but we've had, we've been living this.
Yes, we certainly have. And then I wanna add something a little off, off topic, but not for long. And that is, were this to move ahead, how soon would we regret four charging stations? Would that be considered irresponsible very quickly in the state of age? So, just something to think about before we have a big ask to the two towns.
So, I think Laurie, or someone mentioned, we would create the infrastructure for more and be able to add the stations, right? But at this point, I think it's a balance of.
Because some of the investment we need to run the capacity.
Right. At this point, it was a balance of, you know, how much more are we gonna be asking for for this parking lot? In terms of cost.
So, remember that we wanna solve this and we're not gonna solve it without affirmative votes at two town meetings. And I think every minute we're spending here is in, in pursuit of two affirmative town meetings, votes. When and how is what we're discussing.
Right. And I just wanna repeat that over several years, we have tried to change the behavior of families. And I think at the end of the day, it is not up to the high school administration or us to try to change the behavior of families. We can do a lot of things to try to adjust it a little and encourage carpooling more. But if, if eighty-three students are driving anyway and finding a place, A, I think we need to give them a safer way to do that. And B.
I don't understand what the safety issue, I disagree with it, it's not safety.
Okay, well, I, I do, I think there's a safety issue with walking at the park anyway.
The kids are walking there anyway.
No, it's crossing.
There's just, there's just more foot traffic around everybody.
Eighty-three kids, it's eighty-three kids crossing that street every single day, so.
And, and some.
You should be on that street at lunchtime.
I, I am, no, it's not at lunchtime, it's in the morning. I, I, I am the one sometimes that my son's was car, brought my child.
Then we need to have a police there because.
There is, well, then you need to put a police officer because I was trying to pass as kids are passing. In the morning, there's a lot of traffic, kids coming, running, running to get to school. So, you know, rushing kids, there's eighty-three of them, so.
I'm gonna make a request, if I may. Given that it's a six-member group tonight and we'll, we'll concern on a vote, so I'm gonna ask that we table it and come back. Because I'm hearing so much, I'm hearing such varied opinions. I'm sharing my concerns of the last time we voted, that a split committee really worries me going out into the community and I'm not sure we're there right now. So, my request is to put it back on an agenda, either in the end of March or in April.
So, would it be reasonable to ask of somebody that the ideas that we think are in place now, that might be improved? The new ideas we've been hearing as recently as tonight be examined? And that there at least be a, a prudent prediction as to what those moves might yield in terms of, of mitigating the problem? That doesn't mean we're going to solve the problem. But I think what we're, what I'm trying to do is see that if we go in front of these town meetings, we don't have a debate, the kind of debate we're having here. I don't want that debate. I, I fear that we will have this kind of debate, not because we've staged it, I think it would happen anyway. I think it would happen anyway. And so, if we're gonna go before town meeting, to your point Laurie, let's do it with more evidence that gives this committee more conviction, this is the move to make in front of two town meetings. See if we can get there, if we can get there.
I think I need a little guidance on how to get there because we tried to talk about a subcommittee or a task force and none of that went forward and I'm not sure what that vehicle is. So, I kinda feel like we're back where we were, um, earlier this fall.
When you say predictions, Corey, you're, you're talking number predictions. For instance, if we implemented this sharing, how many, you know?
Well, we've, it's pretty clear to us, we have a parking problem and we have a safety, and we have a safety problem and we have a driving problem, we have a carbon problem. And we have a whole list of things, some of which are in place, some of which are under discussion. Some are quite new to us, we haven't even had time to think them through. But we do have people who know about transportation in this town. We do have people at high school who live with this problem and have for years and probably consider themselves regrettably pain experts on the subject because they have to be. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to volunteer. I think we have resources in town, we certainly have mothers out front. We've done some data collection and they're diving into the analysis. Again, I don't think this has to be that difficult. I think we need to quantify, what's happening, what's it yielding? What could happen, what's it gonna yield? And then we have a much more defensible case for doing what we all wish had been done years ago, but forget it, it wasn't done. We have, we, we need more pavement, sad to say, on that property.
I like that idea and concept. My concern is how are we gonna get to what's it yields?
We better find out, because what's your choice? I'm thinking, you, you may disagree with it. I, my belief is, we're not ready to go to town meeting tonight and I think what's happening here is reflective of what happened at town meeting.
Yes.
Which isn't what we wanna do at town meeting. So, can we move this a little further down the road, no pun intended, before March twenty-four? I think we can.
I actually have a quick question. That after, I, I'm looking at the solutions that the mothers brought to, to us, right? Tracking for the buses, does this mean that the person sitting at home knows that the kid, kid is arriving?
Yes, we have, we have a system like that for the Medco buses. The families get an app and the bus has a tracker on it and they know where the bus is at all times.
Well, most parents, they, they track their kids. I have it on my phone. Actually, most parents have it, kids know where I'm, well, it's a, it's a free thing.
Yeah, this is, this is formal and funded by the district. So, to do that at scale would be costly.
Costly.
Yeah.
It's free, it's free on the phone. So, let's not, I, I'm looking at cost because we are, we're talking about cost, not just sustainability, but also about cost. So, the other question I had about adaptive bus route, is that something that is possible? Can the bus driver get the kids on, is, is it practical from, you know, as the kids are walking onto the bus, he's punching in, who's there? Like, how long would that take? So, the question is practicality, they're like, come on, so like, is that?
I don't know, we have to.
That is a good one, let's not discount.
Well, no.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is anything gonna happen between now and the end of the month or the town meeting? It's gonna change anybody's mind?
I, I tend to side with court. I don't think we're going into town meeting with open eyes because I think there is significant, I'm not just saying this committee, concerns about this article.
There will always be concerns about a parking article.
Okay.
Because there are gonna be people in town that will never vote.
I, I just, I, I don't, okay.
And they will cut one of them, I can express themselves.
We can agree to disagree, I think we could do some more work and potentially get more success.
I think we've exhausted.
I, I, I wouldn't have proposed it if, if, if I wasn't, uh, uncertain because I think we have more work we can do before it's, before, I'm ready to make a decision. I can make a decision tonight. I'd prefer to really critically examine some of these and put some predictions around where they might go if they were implemented effectively. What they would cost, what the yield would be, what the timetable would be for implementation, that's a story the towns deserve.
So, we have motion on the table, Mr. Mistrullo, or would we, go ahead and go?
That was my motion.
And I had a quick question in terms of oil prices because they are down now. Can we, if, if this article goes forward, is there a way to fix those pricing, this pricing for?
We bid the oil, so I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to check.
Because it's, it's the lowest that it has been and that's our, part of our cost.
So, um.
What is your motion?
Yeah, I'd be happy to withdraw my motion. My informal sense of things is that some of us are gonna do something to try to dive into some of these specifics and see where they are in the course of implementation and where they might go with further implementation and what other ideas are in front of us that are viable and what would it look like to, uh, put those into effect with some, some realistic hope for yields. And again, is this gonna provide us a hundred and four spaces or seventy-three, eighty-three spaces? I, I suspect not, but let's do the exercise. Then, then we'll be much more prepared for a request to the towns that has conviction that we. that has conviction that we've done everything possible.
You're voluntary to try to define that?
Sure, sure. I don't wanna do a lot on the people's side.
If you're volunteering, one thing to look at, Gordon, I'm not volunteering for this. But the traffic flow, adding a hundred four cars to that inner area, that's a concern that I have. Regardless of my other feelings about asphalt. I mean, I think that's a lot of load that-
In case, you also need to look at the traffic flow of people who are right now dropping and picking up instead of having their children drive.
I don't think it's a setup. I don't.
I'm there in the morning.
I think it's good.
I mean, some parents are there in the morning.
The junior's drawing.
Okay, so if you, if you would draw your motion, Gordon?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so we're done.
So let's move on to the next town.
Very good. Twenty twenty-one calendar updates. Okay, I moved at the Concord, I hope, oh, actually, this is both, this is a joint. Better if I'm not moving, we can hold up the term. Oh, here.
But the Concord-Karlaugh school committees vote to approve the school calendar twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Update to include Monday, August thirty-first, August thirty-first, twenty twenty, no school kindergarten. Monday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, early release CCHS.
I can just, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. Just give a little background. Because of the way the calendar now falls, the first day of school is Monday, the thirty-first, for a four-day week. Because Labor Day is that coming weekend, we spent some time with the kindergarten teachers, really talking about a four-day full week with a full day Monday. Just trying to be really thoughtful, just as we have been. It was actually really a great parallel we ended up making of the entrance into sixth grade and the entrance into ninth, really starting to consider the entrance into K and transition. So the recommendation from the collaborative group of teachers and the CTA was there is to have that Monday, the thirty-first, be a visiting day for kindergarten, spread throughout the day in small groups and really do some nice intimate entry to kindergarten. And then the kids would start coming on Tuesday the first. Early release is the fourth of the four early release days for the high schools that are part of our plan. The other three were on the other calendar with the pre-K twelve paths. So this was the fourth date, that's just high school that we needed to set. And so this is a proposed date through a committee work with the administration and the CCA. And this will be it, we'll be done with the calendar if you finish this up today. Yeah.
Perfect. Is that motion for both committees?
Yes, for both, sorry.
And is there a second?
Second for both?
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor for the region?
Aye. And all in favor for Concord? Aye, opposed. Great.
Okay, can I have a motion to turn the region?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
It's her name.
All right, I'm taking over. We'll let you guys go.
Have a good night.
We have a couple of updates. Is everybody okay here? Do you need a minute break before we get into it? Two minutes. Okay, we're taking a two-minute break and then we'll continue with the CTS portion of the meeting. And tonight, I'm very excited about this, we've been looking forward to it. Tonight, we get to hear about Spanish in the, well, CPS, but primarily in the elementary schools. I'll just tee it off by saying, three years ago, we, and actually starting before that, we did a lot of work into putting this plan into place. The Spanish program started in the elementary schools, we were so excited to finally bring it in. And so this is a great opportunity to hear about how it's been going. So Yolanda Volpe is here with us. Did you wanna tee up anything else before?
No, I think you did a great job. We're good.
All right, and we can't wait to hear about it. Thanks, welcome.
Oh, thank you. So you probably know this as world citizens, just a way for us to introduce you to what our program does besides teaching, or I should say, helping students acquire the language. My name is Yolanda Volpe, I'm here in the role of mentor and curriculum support for the four wonderful Spanish teachers at the elementary level. We, these are their names and the schools that they work in. We have Leda, who's from Peru, she works as a kindergarten teacher, so she travels through three buildings. Robin Long Navas works at Alcat, she's married to someone from Guatemala and has lived there for a while. And then Howard grew up in Puerto Rico and the United States, and she works at Toro. And Mariana Lys is from Venezuela. Generally, we don't say where people are from, but it's relevant to our victims. So it goes to our proficiency, truly are about the language and culture. I could, I call it an agenda, but it's really not an agenda. But I'm just trying, these are the points that I'd like to highlight tonight. I was asked to bring you up to data, the program has been doing, what are we doing now? So I thought I would start with reminding ourselves of why we're doing K five. I know we all know it, we all read, you know, educational journals, et cetera, that talk about this. We'll talk a little bit about how the K program overview goes. And then we have worked on a mission statement and revised it several times because it's still a work in progress relatively. It's only three years that it's been implemented. So in comparison to our other disciplines, we are unformed, really. I mentioned that we align our standards to a national association, I will be talking about all these points. ACO, which is the Association, the American Council for Teaching Foreign Languages. And it's what all language educators and programs across the states goes to for guidance and research, et cetera. The Massachusetts Frameworks, of course. And then NAL, which is the National Network of Early Language Learning. And that's a growing institution because more and more places are putting the languages in, as, at a kindergarten level. And finally, the best part, which is an example of student work, which I hope you will enjoy. So this is just a view for you of what these programs, what their logos are, if you wanted to look for them. Here is something from Middlebury College, which is very well-known for their language programs. They have language overseas, they're, you know, phenomenal. And this is what they put out there, it's advertising programs. But it's research-based and they're saying this is, these are some of the reasons that we should study languages. And I think you can see that, you know, being a spy is up there as one of the reasons for doing that. Or finding a friend who may not speak your language. I like this one, the bigger, the bigger your world is, the bigger your heart is. And also, some studies have shown that the more language you know, the bigger your brain is. So we're going to go through some of these other, sorry, other languages, why isn't this going, no word?
Did you-
Oh, because I opened it. Okay, got it. And this one. No, we're in my area, sorry. So I opened the link in the third slide and I go back to the original.
Just trying to escape out of it.
Here you go.
Escape, that would do it, right? Thank you, yeah. That's where we are. So the next one is from ACO, and this is about five minutes, I, I'm only showing you one minute. But I do hope you go back because it has a lot of information that's very pertinent. And it's also updated, you know, they do a very good job with tapping into people who do research. And I think you would enjoy hearing what they have to say. Am I not functioning properly? Am I in presentation mode? Let's see.
No.
I'm not. Okay, sorry. I don't think I had it up together. This one, yeah, one play. Should've gone directly, didn't.
Multilingual and multicultural world we share. ACO and sixteen other language organizations collaborated to create the world readiness standards for learning languages.
Okay, let's try one more time, I think I will skip over it. Let's see, this is in the presentation. It's back here, so let's go back, yeah.
The link you gave us does work though on our own machines.
Yeah, it worked on Michael's too as well.
If all else fails, it does, it does work.
Yeah, I think it's projection part, which is not working.
Okay, can I just show it here then, if you have it in front of you just for a few minutes? Or one minute, that's just what I have. Books in the last words. No, no, I was just, I polished it in the school. I was trying to get it there.
Sorry for those watching on TV, we're having some technical difficulties, difficult things, we're just uploading.
I'm sorry, I'm- I just plugged in my computer, it works better, I don't know. Eric, what do you think?
No, I think we, we all want to just use the slides and don't worry about the video.
Okay, yes, fine. So can we stop, sorry, yeah. I will silence it, how's that? Okay.
So we're gonna interpret that domain, that we should look at that on our own.
Correct.
Yeah, please do go look at it, because it has, it has something very interesting.
We'll check out later.
Are we back up? Thank you so much.
You just want to get to presenter mode. There you go.
Oh goodness, thank you. Okay, so the next one, I'll only, hopefully it will work, but this talks about the effects of learning a language on the brain. And I, skip. And skip. Still going here with the filter. All right, this is not going well, I'm so sorry, I don't know why. I will just keep without. Skip. I know, I, I don't know, this is not my computer, I'm sorry.
You know, I think we can, we can talk through it.
Yeah, let's, I'll just do that, so ignore this.
I know that years ago, research suggested that bilingual brain, that actual brain stem thickening, that's how-
That is true.
How much of a stimulus it could be.
Yes.
But that's the extent of my knowledge, that's why you're here.
Well, it does lots of things, it helps students across the curricular with learning in general. Bilinguals have been known to be able to switch tasks very easily, better than people who are monolingual. And it basically gives them a much more, a way to figure out things. So they can do better in math, they can do better in other subjects as well. This woman that I, is, that created the video, is an educator, has done a lot of research based exactly on that, how does it affect the brain? And basically, as I've said, it's that it's not just for learning languages, but it crosses over to other disciplines as well. So that's here for you to browse and if it comes back before, we can do it again. I, I won't take too long, it's a long night for you. But this is what NAL is to say, and again, the people they're quoting are specialist educators with that research on language learning in the early grades. And it talks about how an early childhood can become an integral part of school learning, et cetera. One thing I'd like to say at this point, and we know this, I don't appreciate the fire because you're educators and you approved the program, but imagine if we studied math in sixth grade and how well we would do by the time you're senior. So we have to start thinking of language learning a little more that way. We create a vision statement, I'll, I'll give you a minute to browse through that. And while you're doing that, I'm going to say that we are very much focused on proficiency base, which is the second star. And proficiency refers to being able to use the language for real communication. So it's not memorizing a list of vocabulary words, learning how to count, but to actually use and say, I want two books. So you're using books, you're using the number two, but you actually want two books. So that is what we have focused on. Our mission statement is very simple, the same thing. And we have wrapped into this the way that language learning helps with multiculturalism, other perspectives in understanding other cultures. And one of the anecdotes that the teachers have brought up many times is that they see students when they talk about cultural pieces from other countries, and in this case, Latin American countries or Spanish-speaking countries. They will often raise their hand from the littlest one on to say, oh, my neighbor or my grandparent or my parents do it this way. So all of a sudden, we're sharing all these culturals, cultures that they represented before would never brought up because there wasn't a place for them, you know, it didn't organically happen. And that is happening, so that's a huge plus. This is the description, and again, what students can do with language. The focus in this area is in developing proficiency in Spanish, interpersonal listening and interpersonal speaking. This is important because we don't do a lot of reading by themselves and we don't do writing yet at this level. We are going to be implementing that as we get closer to fifth grade or fifth year, which I'll go and explain more. This is our program, so as you know, we started three years ago in that twenty- This is our program, so as you know, we started three years ago, in that twenty seventeen was our first year. At that time, with the district purchased a curriculum from, um, people who do that, educators who sell curriculum. But as you know, canned curriculums like buying canned food, right? So it's a lot better when you make your own, so that's what we're doing, we're creating our own curriculum as we go along. And the first year, everyone, so K to five, had the same curriculum, so we called that curriculum one. But now we have three years done, and we are studying to work in curriculum four and five in the, in the summer, and continue. As you know, curriculum is always revised and tweaked and changed at long, et cetera, so it's a constant, it's a work in progress. And we try to do what, you know, what goes best for the kids, what they enjoy most, et cetera, et cetera. And here's the first piece of an example that I wanted to share, so I just said we don't do writing, and it's true, we don't. However, what we do is we use something called curriculum, um, excuse me, comprehensible input. What that means is that we want students to hear as much language as possible, in the hopes, or it's been documented, they can then repeat it or put it out to do an output. Curriculum, comprehensible input is supposed to mimic what happens if you go to a country where you don't speak the language at all, and you spend twenty-four seven trying to understand and to produce the language. Nobody sits there and says, this is called a chair, it's a feminine noun, and the verb is, and the noun is. So we're trying to teach it that way, where the kids, without teaching them what structures are, but they will mimic them and produce them. So the teacher in this classroom asked the kids if they wanted to write about a story, and they picked, they wanna write about a dog. They called the dog, um, I don't know, Ishbugash. And then they told the teacher the name of the, what the story was, she wrote it on the active board, and then printed it and gave it back to them, and they all illustrated it. So there was a way for them to produce something without having to know how to write in Spanish. And now we have a problem, because I wanted to show you these very bad. Oh goodness, let's see, maybe I can try again.
You know, if, if you pull it up on your computer, we can see it.
Okay, let's try though, this is.
Cause I, I could hear it okay earlier, could you?
Yeah.
No. Okay, so why can I? Sorry, 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 this is one student reading. Do you want, how can I do this, somebody help me out here? Well, I click and it's not going to the link. Well, I have it on my computer, so I will do that.
Browser.
Anyway, the next few examples are students, and you can go and see these on your own, but I also want to take this minute to invite you to go to the classrooms because it is something to see, you know, it's a new program, and we're doing, you know, I've been asked, what is the progress? So the teachers have made so much progress just writing the vision statement, the, um, the description of the course, creating curriculum, and the students have come a long way. You see what the board graders can do? And again, this is, these are students who have not taken it for three years, right? Whereas the first grader would be there first year. Okay, let's see what we have here. Do you know if you can plug this in here? I usually know it, it's, it's, it's the bigger, that, that's the one. Thank you. Oh, it's there. All right, Jerry, you wanna give it a whirl? I usually go in this side, I don't know if this is a different.
Suspense, thanks for reading. Hopefully we'll get to see some students.
On this way, how's that? Let's see what we can. Yeah, it does. Thank you so much. It's gonna be very anti-Semitic, I'm sorry. I'd love to come back after the time.
Well, we're paying attention, we're paying attention to what you're teaching us about the Spanish program, not about the pitfalls of technology.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the first way to reading one of those stories that they wrote, collaborate.
That was worth the wait, Alonda, there we go.
Hit return in the little ones.
Okay. All right. You're much nicer than my student in high school, that just wanted to be off the door by now.
Is it all the way up? All I can hear is pio, pio.
So what he's saying is, do cows say pio, pio, and they said, no, cows no say, las vacas no dicen pio, pio. Los poluelos dicen pio, pio. And it goes, it repeats itself over and over, but it's one of those things that they wrote before, so that's where that is. And I will try to go on for a couple more, and then I'll let you go, I promise, so here we go. Let's do this one. This is second grade of Willard, and they are singing a song that they learned. So they're talking about fingers and hands are all brothers and sisters. Now, these are only literally twenty seconds, because it's an issue to, to often send them from one device to the other. So we have kept them very brief. And this is from kindergarten. I think it's thorough, but I'm not sure. They like what they're doing. And this is the last one. Okay, so, um.
That's the one you just did.
You did counting, yeah, so look at this. She does not speak any English at all, only occasionally. So it's like, stop, go again. Okay, so I have a couple more slides, and then you're gonna ask me a couple questions, I, I will fly through them because like I said, I know you can go back and see them yourselves. So before I get here, this is in conclusion, and these were the slides, so just to go back. Okay, so I've answered all of those questions I said at the beginning, or I described as best as I could. I got a little flustered here, to my, my audience. But, um, as you can see, that the progress that we've made in three years, that we have three curricula, one for each grade, grade one, two, and three. We are working on the kindergarten curriculum, because we wanna keep it very light with music and fun and games. And we are not doing any direct instruction per se, they are learning by acquiring. So in this field, there is a lot of discussion between learned language and acquired language. We're going for acquired language, which means it's what the way your children learn at home when they're one-year-old. They, nobody's teaching them grammar, they're learning, they speak eventually, they'll, they say it correctly, right? So this is what we believe, this is what we try to do. Our teachers are wonderful, they've gone to several, um, professional development, professional learning to learn how to do this the best way possible, the most effective practice that we can use for early language learning. And, um, I'm not gonna go back to those, you can go. But, um, I was wondering if you had any questions for me, this was my original introduction as to what I was going to talk to you about. So I don't know if there's anything you want to know that I stumbled upon, missed.
Yes, first of all, thank you for pulling this up.
Oh, okay.
It is fun to see the kids playing and singing and having fun, yeah, join us.
Do you wanna sit?
Oh, sure.
Um, I just wanted to comment, I love that we are making it our own curriculum, like you said, not just a canned curriculum.
Right.
I also know that since we implemented it, and then each year, more and more kids are doing it, there's change that goes on with that every year, and so I'd love to hear how that is going, you know, each year adjusting the curriculum to the new level that we haven't done yet.
Right.
And then I know the sixth grade teachers are involved in constant, in adjusting also, so.
So I'll start, I'll, I'll start and go backwards. So sixth grade, we haven't done anything yet, because students that have gone to sixth grade the past three years have only had one or two years, and by the way, they need twenty-five minutes twice a week, so. Again, if you want to consider, are you learning language on your own, or you acquire language, it's twenty-four seven, seven days a week, right? So we have to keep that in mind, it's like taking piano lessons. Nobody plays Mozart except, you know, practicing twenty-five minutes twice a week for X amount of time. So it's important, because the proficiency levels, the way that they, um, measure this is based on amount of hours that a student is in a classroom or is involved with that language. So it's, it's important for us to know that it's an introduction, really.
Right.
So as far as sixth grade articulation, we will be talking about that in the next couple of years, when the first group was at five years in a row, is going on. I think there will be a difference, teachers haven't seen a lot of differences in their, you know, what they can do, but there is a lot more, uh, that's what I'm looking for, open mindness, they embrace the language, they don't, they don't get to middle school and say, what is this? Why, why do I have to do this? It's more like, oh, I know this.
So there's a difference in mindset, basically.
Exactly.
That's great.
Yeah, it really, there is a difference. And, um, the other question was about curriculum, so what we do, the elementary teachers at Tuesday afternoons, they met for the past three years, that we Tuesday afternoon, when there's early release for the elementary, and they work on curriculum. And it's a lot of work, because, um, it's good work, but it takes, it needs the time of more, because you're, you're constantly looking for new activities that they can do, or for videos, and it's all, you know, authentic, it's what we're doing, we're creating our own. We have looked at exemplars from other places, and we have taken, you know, hints here and there, what we like to do. We have visited several schools, we've been to Wellesley, we have been to Connecticut, it's a school, Glessenberry, Connecticut, it's renowned. They've had a program for fifty years.
Wow.
So we have got to see them with all the teachers. And they have asked, I mean, they constantly ask me, can I go to this conference, can I go to this presentation? And we were lucky at the last K twelve curric, um, Professional Learning Day, we had someone come to speak to us about comprehensible input, and they loved it, it was very successful. So they are so excited to go in and, and, you know, and, and see the results, they, you know, that's what they say, I can't believe they're saying this to me. And I've seen some classes myself where, um, I have to say, I was taken by surprise, because one of the things they do, they teach the kids rejoinder, so reactions like, oh, great, wonderful, why not? You know, they, they know this, and the teacher is telling them a story, and the people with different ones are going, oh, how wonderful, kid, kid, I, kilaskima, what the god? And it's not written anywhere, you know, they don't have it memorized, it's not what we're gonna do today, you're gonna have to say these three words. So that piece is very rewarding to see, it's very nice, did I, that answer your question?
Yeah, definitely, yeah, that's great.
So they're still working on curriculum, basically, is what I said.
Well, constantly, which makes sense, yeah, that's great.
Does the, uh, teacher come and teach in the regular classroom, or does the class leave and find the Spanish teacher elsewhere?
So we were very lucky, and the teachers feel very lucky also, that they have a classroom in each building.
So it can be really dedicated to it.
Yes, and they have ve- they have a beautiful, rich environment, if you walk in, you know you're in a language class, in a Spanish class, there's music, and there are posters, and it's very colorful, it's a heaven place for them.
That's great, that makes a big difference, yeah.
That is pretty great.
It makes a huge difference. Unfortunately, our kindergarten teacher does not have a room yet, we haven't been able to locate one. So she has been using, um, the auditorium in two of the buildings, which is not a bad idea, but it's, uh, it's, she takes a corner of it. The problem is that it's kind of spacious and large, and, you know, but she's wonderful, I mean, uh, the way she can, um, so I observed one class at Thoreau, and it was, um, I've, I've gone many times, but one of the classes I observed, it was the week before Halloween, and they'd set the stage in the auditorium for a play, so I'm thinking, uh, I don't know, all this class is gonna do, I mean, because it's gonna be distracting, right? There's all these beautiful things, and, um, she was so wonderful, all inspired, she said, do you wanna know what these things are called? So we went around, she named everything, they all said what they, since they're, are we gonna go back and look at them now? No, are we gonna touch, no, she never tries, I was, wow, that is amazing, so she's very good, she has an early childhood background, and she's Spanish speaking, so. But it's working out for her, ideally it would be nice to have a place as well, but not yet.
And for next year, are you gonna have to expand the faculty? Or is there the capacity with the four teachers that you have for next year's plans?
I think it stays the same, because each teacher teaches all the children from grade one to grade five in the three buildings, and the elementary's, uh, teacher goes, you know, her schedule is such that she teaches in bulk, so we try to keep everyone filling each day, but it's not always done like that. And she's part-time, so.
Great, that's great. Other questions?
My apologies for the.
Great, we've been wanting. No, 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 it is great and fun that you were able to pull up the links of the kids. We've been looking forward to hearing about this, so thank you for coming inside, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
That's great, it's great. Okay, and they are, they are, it's great, um, I feel lucky that we're in a district that does this. Um, and another one we've been looking forward to hear, Madison Civics Education. So I will invite up, I'm not sure who's coming up here.
I think, I'm obviously, yes.
Bob, first of all.
Okay.
Bob, then, uh.
Bob, welcome.
Thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm Bob Partey, this is my fifty-second year in the county public schools. I've changed my life, I need to get a life. But anyway, um, it's fortunate that I have an opportunity to work on developing the social studies curriculum for K five, so it's aligned with both national and state standards. And the presentation that I will be doing in just a moment, uh, starts at the forty thousand foot level, what do national documents say about civics education? Then what does the state framework say, um, which was adopted by the Department of Education twenty-one months ago, after a fifteen-year hiatus of updating curriculum? And then what are we doing specifically around civics education, uh, each grade level, K through five? So, and I do have a couple links, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go down that road. So, uh, one is to the Library of Congress, and one is to the Constitution Citizenship Day Study. So just for starters, um, there was a document that was developed in two thousand thirteen, which in today's world might make it outdated, but it really isn't. It's called the, and I have to read this through.
Do you wanna talk off this, is that gonna help you? Is that what you're doing?
That's what I'm doing, question, so.
You can just toggle ahead.
Okay, okay. So this document, the official title, which was developed by the National Council of Social Studies, is The College Career and Civic Life Framework for Social Studies State Standards Guidance by Enhancing the Rigor of K-12 Civics, Economics, Geography, and History. And I think it's not by coincidence that they listed civics first. Some would say civics, economics, geography, history is alphabetical, but I think there was a deeper meaning to that. I remember that when I was in high school, the science courses were biology, chemistry, physics, and apparently in eighteen ninety-eight was decided to put them in that order alphabetically. Now we know that probably of those three, biology is the most complicated, because everything is at molecular level, and you really need to understand physics and chemistry before you can do biology. But I'm dating my son. So. Are we there yet? As you can see in the conversation, get out the driveway. So starting with this, uh, in the document, um, that hopefully you can show up on the screen, it states in the preamble, the, the call for students to become more prepared is by, for the challenge of college and career is united with a third critical element, preparation for civic life. And when I think about, you know, the world, the nation, uh, the environment which we live, it's really important for students to know what their rights, roles, responsibilities are. And so through civics education, we attempt to, um, educate, inform, and inspire students to think what it means to be a good citizen. To me, that's the core, that probably sets really pre-K, but uh, we have a theme in our curriculum for social studies called community. It's probably the man-made strand or thread in this wonderful tapestry that we were weaving together. It's one that continues through the grades, is integrated both horizontally with other units of study and vertically with other grade levels.
Or is there a scroll down?
There's a scroll down.
Jared, hit the Apple TV, see if I can get up there.
Yeah, that's easy. Yes, we certainly are. So the C-three framework encourages development, this is again a quote from that framework, the last quote from the national document. The development of state social studies standards that, and I emphasize this, it's all in bold as you can see, uh, support students in learning to be actively engaged in civic life. Engagement in civic life requires knowledge and experience. Children learn to be citizens by working individually and together as citizens. And so in kindergarten, we have a unit called communities. And we define community as a place where we live, work, play and solve problems together. And in kindergarten, we introduce the idea of community that every student belongs to multiple communities. The classroom is a community, the school is a community, the church or house of worship is another community. Organizations to which they own, Brownies, Cub Scouts, is another community, their family is a community. Concord and Boston are communities and so forth, and we expand that idea of communities through the grades. But the idea is, in each community, you have a role, you have a responsibility, you have certain rights, and you should be a positively contributing member to that community.
And you're live now.
Oh, I am.
Just that screen, but it's better than where we were.
Yes.
Just tell, I'm in, I'm driving, so Bob, just tell me when it's changed.
Okay, just go ahead, oh, this is amazing. For me, that must be serving of all, so thank you, Andy.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
D B or F there.
We'll proceed to the next one, Laurie. So, and I love this position because I really, my goal likely is to become a meteorologist on TV. I mean, I took everything, oceanography, graduate courses in climatology, so I'm better than with my green boy.
There you go.
There we go. So, uh, we'll just go to the next one. So at the state level, uh, Commissioner Wiley, who I think was coming out with some statement about this today.
I think he got distracted.
He got distracted, right? In his introductory letter to the twenty eighteen revision of the state framework writes, this revision of the framework retains the strengths of the previous frameworks and includes, and now you can put this in bold, increased emphasis on civics at all grade levels. Yeah, that's serving for round of applause. The introductory portion of the state framework states, primary purpose of history and social science education prepares students to have the knowledge and skills to be thoughtful and active participants in a democratic society and a complex world. The future democracy depends on our students' development of the knowledge, skill and dispositions of students, of citizens who embrace democracy's potential while recognizing its challenges. And what I find, and I learned this when I was doing the science program for the elementary schools several years ago, young students are capable of very powerful ideas. We can never underestimate the thinking and empathy of young kids. The questioning ability is there. All we need to do is have the talent to have them surface these questions and find the answers. So we'll continue to the next one, and we'll see that um, there are seven standards for socials, uh, history and social science practice. Uh, if you want me to read them all out too, I will, but these are the two that contain specifically the civics. Principle number one, in a fact, if history and social science curriculum teaches students about the legacy of democratic government and jumping down to this, their rights and responsibilities as informed residents and citizens of a democratic society. And these principles go all the way through pre-K through twelve. Principle number five, in a fact, if history and social science education creates knowledge, you may be able to study. And somebody might say, well, what are civic dispositions? Not this doggone body, I know that, but to a, average reader, so, and most of these you might say in that age-old adage, everything I needed to know, I lived in kindergarten. Civic disposition comes in values, virtues, behaviors, respect for others, commitment to equality, capacity to listening, capacity for communicating in ways accessible to others. Okay, we'll go, okay. Now, at the beginning of the school year, I sent out an email to all this year seventy-three K-five teachers to inform, alert and remind them that the seventeenth of September is Constitution Day. And by law, federal law, any school receiving federal funds needs to have some program or way to acknowledge Constitution Day, also known as Citizenship Day. Always celebrate on the seventeenth, but if the seventeenth happens to be a Saturday or Sunday, it may be celebrated on the Friday before or the Monday following the weekend. And so, um, maybe we'll try that, like, do you wanna try just the link, uh, at the bottom, it's a road right there? So what I do is I send out, and it's very grade level specific and age-appropriate, links to uh this website which shows, for example, this is a team that got a lesson plan about the Constitution. So every grade level teacher gets specific resources for their students to learn about, uh, and these are just, this is just one of many uh resources on that and other websites, so the teacher can go to, for example, grade one, the Constitution of the Country's Rules. Now, this is not a one and done. In grade five, there's a unit later in the year called the Federal Government and the United States Constitution. And throughout the year, the outer focus of September seventeenth is whether you should be a good citizen. So we'll go back to the main slides again. Excellent, eh?
That's awesome.
Very excellent, eh?
We'll just pull that out, that's okay.
There we go.
Manageable.
There we go.
Good, so now I'm just taking you through a quick tour of what civics education looks like right now at K-five. Topic number one, there are several topics of kindergarten suggested by the state, topic number one is called civics, classroom citizenship. Supporting question, what does it mean to be responsible? Students should be able to understand and follow rules, take on responsibilities, do example in literature and so forth, and I won't read it to you because you all have that anyway. As I said, we have a unit in kindergarten called Communities, which was developed by the kindergarten teachers, all twelve kindergarten teachers actually, in twenty eighteen. And uh, all the lessons in the Communities unit are aligned to all sixteen standards in the state framework. The standards on civics, economics, geography and history. We also include the year at appropriate times, for example, in January, during uh the celebration of Dr. Mountain's, the King Junior's birthday, we have a holiday in there, where students learn through class discussion and other resources about a certain holiday that is addressed or commemorated. And the big, big idea in kindergarten for social studies is that they learn about classroom democracy, local geographic tradition in the United States, and community, and questions such as, why is it important to be fair to other people? Okay, we're going to the second, first grade. So, again, before the state framework came out, maybe we were present in this, but we came up with this idea, community should be the theme of our curriculum, and then it comes up in the state framework. I don't know if we should have royalties on that or not, but we, we did it before the state 社会. Students learn about leadership on many levels, and they have questions as to what makes a good community member and how do we contribute to the community? And again, topic one, communities, elections and leadership, what does it mean to belong to a leader group? And then the element about history of the United States in terms of unity and diversity. Standard seventeen, I'll just pull this one out of the main standards for first grade. Students demonstrate understanding of the way people show pride and belonging to the United States by recognizing and explaining the meaning of unifying symbols, phrases and songs such as, the United States flag, all evil the white house actually live in. So that's addressed in this, again, National Holidays and Symbols Unit. And we also look at communities here, at home, and in Ghana, because we have a unit on life in Ghana that is taught in every elementary school in first grade. So it's comparing communities, in many ways we're more alike than we got different. Okay, second grade. We got really excited about second grade because we've done a lot in second grade the last few years. Now civics is really in the context of some of the other strands or domains of social studies such as geography. And they begin to look now at immigration in second grade. For several years, that was the domain of fourth grade, now it's in second grade and, and we turn to, or revisit in fourth. Uh, again, communities. Much of the second grade curriculum in social studies, uh, in second grade is around nineteenth century conquered. And so they learn about the Alcott family. And for years, they would go to visit the Orchard House, they still do. And uh, they learn about Bronson and Abigail and Anna and Louisa and Beth and May, or known as Meg, Joe, Beth and Amy, if they've seen the movie Red Bull. But now we've added another dimension. Mr. and Mrs. Alcott were not just the parents of Louisa and the other three girls. They were station masters on the Underground Railroad. And their house, when they lived at Wayside, was a station on Underground Railroad. So we talk about, in a unit called African Americans and abolitionists who lived in Concord long ago, we learn about people who lived in Concord in the nineteenth century, who took a very important role in the abolition movement. Another big unit in second grade is about Henry David Thoreau. And if you're in Concord, you always pronounce his name thorough, and the way I always remind the kids is, Henry always did a thorough job. Not thorough, thorough. Now they always have learned that Henry was a multi-dimensional, uh, fully-orgued, multifaceted individual. But now, they learn in this, in addition to being environmentalist, author, pencil maker, teacher, he was a conductor on the Underground Railroad. So we bring that dimension into the story of narrative Henry. One of the lessons in this unit is called Individuals Can Make a Difference. Specifically, children can make a difference. And one of the stories, we, you wanna try this one, Laurie, we talk about the petition, there it is, that a hundred and ninety-five schoolchildren from Concord signed to, and sent to President Abraham Lincoln. Now this was eighteen sixty-four, the Emancipation Proclamation had already been signed. But what did the Emancipation Proclamation do? It outlawed slavery in the Confederate states. These children in Concord were petitioning that all slave children or enslaved children should be emancipated. Well, it's a great story, probably most of you know the story. But we take a look at why the children took a risk, and I actually did research on all the signatory signers of that document, as much as I could find, many of them were children of Irish immigrants who worked at Damon Mill, who was Concord. Some of them were children whose fathers, brothers, uncles were serving in the Civil War. Some of them have typical Concord names, Botrick, Hosma, Ripley. But here, we find that in this group of stu- children, they made a difference. And the point is, you can make a difference collaboratively. Well, President Lincoln receives this, uh, I'm sure he got a lot of correspondence, but it was Massachusetts government, Senator Sumner, who said, Mr. President, we really need to look at this. And he writes a letter back to Concord, and those letters, I know, are in each one of those schools. He addresses it to uh Mrs. Mann. Her sister is Sophia Hawthorne, her other sister is Elizabeth Peabody, but this is Par's man's widow. And all she did was, she had good penmanship to write that. The real legwork was to an abolitionist known as Mary Rice. So the kids start learning about children, women, other people in the town who made a difference. So we'll go back to the slide, this is just one example of the documents the kids are looking at in second grade. And why do they look at it? Because they can see even children can make a difference. One story we tell in second grade is, a child, an individual can make a difference. And they learn about Ellen Garrison, the granddaughter of Caesar Robbins, formerly enslaved man. And it was Concord's bicentennial, eighteen thirty-five. And all the schoolchildren in Concord were gonna walk in a parade, except Ellen Garrison. She was the only child of color in the school. And when she was asked, why don't you wanna walk in the parade, she said, because nobody will walk with me. Twelve-year-old Ellen Garrison. Along comes nine-year-old Abba Prestott, she said, I'll walk with you, Ellen. We'll go hand by hand, and we'll walk right down through Concord Center, and that's exactly what they did. And we tell that story, and we do this program with the Concord Museum, who comes into every second grade classroom. And uh, they learn about how the fact that Ellen Garrison, they became a strong activist for civil rights. She went south as an adult, taught formerly enslaved and in women how to read and write. One day she's sitting in the train station at, in Baltimore, women's only rooms, a waiting room, she's bodily thrown out because she's a woman of color. She takes it to the state Supreme Court, this is about a hundred years before Rosa Parks. So they learn again how an individual, a young girl, can develop the courage and risk-taking to become an activist. This is okay, grade three. Again, a lot of information here, so I think grade three civics is more embedded or integrated with other units, as opposed to standalone. And so they learn about, again, the community of place called Skatiklin, the indigenous people who lived here before sixteen thirty-five, actually after sixteen thirty-five. And they learn about the English service in Massachusetts, again, a program that we do with the Concord Museum, a program called Two Worlds Meet. What happens when two cultures collide or cooperate or have conflict? And they also learn about the early settlers, pilgrims and Puritans, and look at historical documents such as the Mayflower Contract. And then they also learn about Concord during the colonial period as well. But one major theme in third grade is Massachusetts government. Learning about the three branches of government and how uh cities and towns work, why do we have taxes and so on and so forth. Fourth grade, and I'll try to speed this up. We'll take a look at it.
Sorry.
That's not right.
God, I was in charge.
That's not right.
And then you captivated me, Bob.
Oh, I'm not, anyway, uh, we, now we return to the, uh, topic immigration, but the issues around modern-day immigration. We also look at the four waves of immigration, the colonial wave, the, uh, we call the Irish, the Kato family wave, the Ellis Island wave and the uh early twentieth-century wave, which was primarily Eastern European and Mediterranean. But then the issues around immigration today and pathways to citizenship, and so we really begin to look at, the, the major, main idea in the fourth grade is, uh, the five major geographical regions of the United States. And in each region, look at different groups of people who immigrated from other places or were involuntarily like the United States, such as the Middle Passage. And their contributions to that region. And so, we start with an introduction to citizenship in the beginning of the year, and rights and responsibilities, and later in the year, pathways to citizenship for um, how people become naturalized citizens. And finally, fifth grade. We do a lot in fifth grade. It's very history-based, um, a lot, again, major documents, the Declaration of Independence, the Articles of Confederation, the US Constitution, the Suffolk Resolves, which was conceived, the first two, the Bill of Rights, and then they learn about the three branches of government. And a lot of discussion about the cuts of the Constitution. This year, I, I have an activity that I designed for the students that, I'm gonna see how it goes, where every student is a delegate to the Constitutional Convention. On the card it says, how many students, uh, how many citizens in that particular uh state are enslaved or black, how many are white, and what led to the Three-Fifths Compromise? Talk about fairness, unfairness, compromise, and why the Constitution is a living, organic document, why it's been amended many, many times. and why the Constitution is a living, organic document, why it's been amended many, many times. So, a lot that goes on in the K through five really focuses upon our country and our role in that country. And I hope it prepares kids well for middle school.
Thank you, love.
Must be your turn, Bob.
You told me I was gonna go on at night and night and talk about select and have to follow Bob.
Yeah.
Ideal situation. And so, you know, it's interesting, listen, my name Robbie Robbins.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, and I'm the department's, Department Chair for Social Studies in the Middle School. And I've been teaching social studies in middle school for 18 years. And so, it's just interesting listening to Bob talk about the K through five, about just how much we reinforce, and, you know, because we spend more time, have more time in front of the students, probably delve deeper than they can to K through five. But I like to see that there's so much reinforcement that's going on. We're definitely on the same plan. And so, as Bob alluded to, you know, there have been new frameworks that were created in 2018 by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And basically, our students will demonstrate civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions, which as Bob did allude to, you know, involves many different subjects. Government, economics, history, geography. And we definitely believe in integrating all of those in teaching civics. So, you know, some civics lessons are standalone, but many of them are integrated in other lessons in units throughout the year. Certainly, critical thinking is a big developmental step for middle school. And as I talk about grade six, seven, and particularly eighth, we'll take a look at how we've embedded some of that critical thinking into our curriculum. So grade six is a world geography curriculum, which I think the theme that we talked about earlier tonight was community. And I think what we really focus on in this particular curriculum is how basically the global community operates and how our students are part of that larger community at large. So basically, they're taking a look at political science, economics, geography, history, archeology. And the state actually allows us to look at different regions of the world. And so, in sixth grade, they're basically jumping around continent to continent and looking at different investigations in each continent, whether it happens to be climate change or immigration, human rights, within the context of world geography. In terms of connections, basically, the essential question is how does geography affect society, societal development and interaction? So we take a look at what a community is. We emphasize the ideas of tolerance and diversity within that larger global community. Students start learning about different forms of government around the world, whether it's monarchy, parliamentary democracy, republican democracy. Students will identify local, national, and global issues. Students are always doing current events in sixth grade, for example. And as I said, each continent is sort of linked to a certain theme, whether that's environmentalism, human rights, globalization. And so that way, it's not just geography, but it's basically integrating this idea of global community into the geography curriculum in sixth grade. Seventh grade is an ancient civilizations curriculum. And basically, we're taking a look at both geography and the ancient societies within Asia, Africa, and Europe. And it concludes with a study of government, which once again, those civics connection, study of government in Greece and Rome, which is directly going to relate to the eighth-grade civics curriculum, where we're looking at democracy or republican democracy here in the United States. In terms of grade seven civics connections, we're taking a look at how societies have differed across time and region. When we look at culture, we talk about emphasis of respect, so we connect back to the sixth grade and connecting all the way back to the kindergarten lessons. Well, just respect for other people, respect for diversity. They will learn in more detail about historical forms of governance while it gets introduced in the sixth grade. We really delve deep into the idea of democracy, republics, talk about Greece and Rome, the evolution of rights, starting with Hammurabi's Code in Mesopotamia. And we do DBQ, primary source investigation. So students in seventh grade are actually asked to look at primary sources throughout the ancient world and relate those ideas of fairness and rights even to our society today, which is sort of our direct link to eighth grade. And in eighth grade, we have had a curriculum that predates me by many, many years. I think going back, as far as I know, into the 1980s, Concord has had a curriculum in eighth grade, social studies called The Search for Justice. And Search for Justice basically is United States history, but it's a critical look at just the evolution of rights, if our constitution has actually upheld its values throughout United States history, and basically, how our government operates and civic responsibilities of our citizens. And our students, obviously, will one day be in that role. The eighth grade one, I honestly could have created 20 slides. Our entire year, from start to finish, is a civics curriculum. So basically, our framing question is what conditions create a just society? We're trying to take a look at just the idea of justice and how you would create a more just society. We're particularly looking at marginalized groups and how they could gain equal rights and opportunities throughout the United States history. We are tasked basically with Jamestown through Reconstruction. So it's 1607 to 1877, act of the Civil War. And basically, the entire course is an overview of political philosophy and government tied in with this idea of rights and justice. We specifically, and this was just a small list, there's actually more, but we specifically spend a lot of time and take a look at the Declaration of Independence, Articles of Confederation. We actually hold a mock Constitutional Convention in our class. And we look at state and local history. We've actually connected with the Concord Museum specifically over the last few years and created a project where students will study Concord abolition. And we look at three branches of government, the US Bill of Rights, civil rights amendments particularly created after the Civil War. And we have connected recently and are working pretty actively with the Concord League of Women Voters. We had them come into our eighth grade classrooms just two weeks ago to talk about just the importance of registering to vote, why it's important to be, you know, have civic participation, the history of voting in the United States, how certain marginalized groups were obviously unable to vote for long periods of time. And we also participate now in the Civics Week, which unfortunately was just canceled.
I'm looking at the news up there.
Due to illness. But I will say that I, we had three eighth graders this year that went to all the practices. They got really into it. They weren't, they obviously, you know, they were disappointed in it, but I think they were just psyched to be involved in the whole process. So we think that's been a very positive connection as a link. I mentioned the Concord Museum. So we're working with Susan Foster, who's basically Director of Education at the Concord Museum. She comes to our school and works with us on a project. She's taught us a lot about, you know, Concord history. And at the end of the year in eighth grade, students go on the Washington DC trip. We're having the past. And the Washington DC trip is, you know, a lot, obviously, a lot of civic connections for our students. Not necessarily a social studies trip per se, but it tends to have many connections that we talk about and connect to before students go. Just actually, next week, we're having a speaker from the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice in Boston come out to speak with our eighth graders. She works in the Community Outreach Program at the Department of Justice. We have a local judge coming into our classroom next week. In the past, we've had lawyers, we've had local representatives. So once again, I think there's just a lot of civics connections in the eighth grade. That's how the curriculum has been designed for years. And then finally, it's got a little bit, but finally, the state passed a law. And basically, the law is going to state in 2018 that all schools need to enact a civics project for students in both eighth grade and in high school. And so, students are going to be expected to complete this, what we are calling an Action Civics Project. We had already sort of had a head start, because we've been heading in this direction for the last few years before the law was even signed. But we do need to implement it by next school year officially. So last year, we're sort of a pilot. This year, we're going to develop the pilot even further, and next year, it'll be ready to implement. Basically, what we are doing is following a model that already exists for many middle schools in the area called the Action Civics Model, where students basically are going to research a justice topic of interest, so something that they feel passionately interested in. And the additions to the project is after they do all the research, after they write this big paper that we're in conjunction with the high school with, students are going to need to make a civic connection by reaching out to the local state or national community. What that means is very different for each student. But for example, last year, students that were researching, you know, the issue of vaccines, for example, I had a student send a survey out to all local hospitals and doctors and got over 1,000 responses, you know, about their perspective on vaccines. I know other students wrote letters to representatives, senators, just to reach out and get this idea of what it means to be civic participant, what it means to be, you know, a more global citizen. And students then presented their findings in civics exhibit. I think we learned a lot last year doing it once. It's just about how long it takes to get a response, for example. So these are things that we're going to build in over the next year or so to, once again, create this model that we call the Action Civics Model. So I think that is, I believe that is it. I don't know if there's any questions or.
Or you guys.
Yeah, either one of us, or, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, you talked a lot of curriculum.
You certainly proved worthy of following.
Yes.
Nice job.
I'd have to follow.
Oh, yes, you are. No, that, you know, it's encouraging to hear the report and how you share it with the larger community. And I think we're particularly pleased that, one, there's an emphasis on this at the state level, and two, that we have the capacity here through you to support teachers to see that this is implemented in a really authentic, vibrant kind of way for our kids. I have a question for you, and that is, it goes like this. When I learned civics, and I don't think things were as accomplished as they are now, I was getting my current events from maybe two dozen journalists, The Boston Globe, and two TV stations and so on. Where, in your estimation, where do current events come from? How are kids informed? They're very informed, but I don't think they're relying on media the way you and I did. Can you speak to it?
Yeah, I mean, well, first of all, I think it's something that we definitely stress up to the middle school from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, digital literacy. You know, the idea that students nowadays have to be much more, you know, I think they need to be, you know, wary. I think they need to understand where the sources are coming from. So we actually teach them how to do that, starting in sixth grade. I think very often, I will say that we, I think, try to provide objective resources for students, you know, and try to make them understand what we would consider to be, you know, more academic or, you know, more believable, I guess, in this era of hashtag fake news, you know, that we live in. But, you know, generally speaking, I think, you know, a lot of them honestly are probably the same sources. You know, students use Boston Globe, or they use New York Times, or they use Time Magazine and Newsweek. And those are the ones we steer our students towards for current events.
Okay.
You know, I tend to not accept, you know, the person blogging in their mother's basement, but, you know.
Yeah, I guess I would, and as Bob, what you said. I think even with a library of senior staff, they, one of the goals, I think, as teachers, is to make sure our kids are critical consumers of information and have the ability to differentiate between fact and fiction or exaggeration and propaganda and so forth. And one of the things we do in the fifth grade is we look at propaganda during the American Revolution. Even, you know, two days ago, three days ago, was the 250th anniversary of the Boston Massacre. And analyzing power figures, sketch of that, and trying to determine how much of that was used to promote revolution and how much of it was factual and so forth. So, and that, you know, having different points of view in media is nothing new. I mean, obviously, during the American Revolution, you get strong Tory loyalist papers, and you also have ones that were more for the revolution. Today, those lines are getting blurred. And people tend to gravitate, particularly in terms of electronic media, to what just reinforces their own point of view. So I think kids need to be taught to be open to opposing or alternative points of view and then determine from a big red, a big purr, whether they discuss what makes sense and what is perhaps exaggeration.
I would just, I would totally agree. And I would just add, finally, that, you know, I think in this era that we're in right now, as a social studies teacher, I think our job is just to model, you know, proper discourse, proper academic behavior. So I think the more that our students can see the teachers doing that on a daily basis, I think they need it. You know, I think it's necessary.
That's heartening. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think just when you began with kindergarten and seeing how we treat each other, that's just so powerful, I think. And if you build up on that till eighth grade, you obviously have very rich local resources to work with, but it seems like you don't just present that picture. What you're presenting is, as much as you can, a US and sort of worldwide picture at that point. So I think it's great.
And in a way, I think it's so important, for example, in first grade, that you studied Ghana. That is another culture. And I think it's important for kids to know that, including our Boston students, there is a world beyond Massachusetts. The other thing is, obviously, we also do a lot of collaboration with the Concord Museum. Susan Foster, they have designed programs specifically to match our curriculum. We have not just skills at the school museum, but help with programs that come into the fashion program in middle school in second and third grade. And again, the chance for kids to actually handle real artifacts, engage in discussion, and thoughtful reflection. I mean, we're really blessed in this family, the resources that we have in a greater community, but also within the school community.
Yeah. Thank you.
Definitely any other questions?
I'll just say, you know, we've heard several times how the civics education is woven through the curriculum. And this was really helpful to see, grade by grade, how it really, really is woven in. It's present everywhere. So I'm sorry we kept you here so long waiting for it. But thank you so much for sharing this with us.
You're welcome.
It's really helpful.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, Dr. Hunter probably told you, we've been eager for this for some time. So this was great.
Thank you.
And to keep in mind that, as I said, the K through five, and probably at six, eight, two, it's an evolving curriculum. We're not there yet. We're still developing, we're refining, we're revising. And we're still, we're in.
That's great to hear as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Okay. Guys, we don't have that much left. We're going to, oh, I almost jumped right over the building project update, which we won't skip. We'll do a very quick, high-level building project update tonight, which is basically that the design teams have been working with the leadership team of the Building Committee to really start to get some numbers behind the things that we're looking at. They have brought to us five conceptual design, I wouldn't even say designs, design concepts, ideas to start looking at and narrowing down, and those are being narrowed down. They're working on putting some numbers behind that.
Those were presented at the forum, or is that something?
So those were presented at the forum. That was the next thing. So we had a forum on February 27th over at PBD. It was very successful. We had great attendance, we had great questions, great input and feedback there. So far, we've gotten feedback that it was very helpful and successful. So that's great. We're working on summarizing all of the input that we got there. And we'll be presenting that or sharing that out at the next Building Committee meeting. The next Building Committee meeting, by the way, will be once we have some more of those numbers and information together. It's going to be March 26th, Thursday morning, here at 7:30 as always. And from there, we'll start to have even more interesting discussions as we have numbers attached to them. Did I miss anything more? That's kind of the.
No, that's it.
No, that's where we are.
Quick high level.
That's great.
Okay, so ongoing FY21 budget again, just back to it briefly. Do you have an update, or are we just reconfirming?
We're really just reconfirming.
Yeah.
Nothing's changed, so we felt the need to put it back on the agenda just because we still have a delta with the Finance Committee guideline.
Right.
Those numbers are continually being reviewed as we get better information, but they're not being reviewed, you know, they're not moving in a way that's freeing money up all of a sudden. So I don't think we have a recommendation to you. I know we don't have a recommendation for you in terms of how we would close that right now. That wouldn't have impact either on staffing, instructional materials, or contingency, so.
So that's where it is. So far, we as a group have unanimously said we support the budget as is. So that's where it is. So far we as a group have unanimously said we support the budget as is. Any change in that stance for anybody?
No, I think we'd like to, uh, uh, work with the, uh, the guideline both at the region and CBS. But, uh, the program is the program. If, if we landed on the place that we need to protect, which we have, I think, uh, that's, that's where we stand. But thankfully the gap is, is a relatively small one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have the public hearing on Monday, correct?
We have, yes, sorry, we have the public hearing Monday evening at the townhouse. So anybody is welcome to come and ask questions and, and Dr. Hunter and Jerry will help answer them. Thank you for bringing it back and for the continued work on it to see if there's movement and it's good to just hear the update. All right, we're good on that then. And the last is a vote to approve a tree and bench donation. Uh, is anybody a promotion of this? I can get to the motion language, but like, no, so can you make a motion?
Yeah, so we're very fortunate to have a community member, uh, who has requested permission to plant a tree in memory of her deceased mother on the Alcoa School property. Would be planted in close proximity to an existing tree planted in memory of her deceased father. Planted on existing green space located near the Laurel Street entrance to the Walk-in Path. And this community member would like to donate a, uh, bench with no plaque for installation on the existing concrete pad in the same area. Uh, I'm certain this has, uh, been worked on with Dr. Hunter and the principal at the school and with their, uh, their support and advocacy for moving ahead. I would move that the Concord School Committee vote to accept the donation of a tree and bench for installation on the Alcoa School grounds.
Second.
That's great. Is there further discussion? Just we've gotten to hear a little of the family history. It's a really special spot for them. Seems like a win-win.
Yes.
Really? And they came out and met with Bress and showed us the spot.
It's nice.
Good. And many, many students and teachers will have that in fifteen years to come. Wonderful.
As we said a moment ago, we are lucky to be a part of this community where that, where that community is so important, that sense of community. So with thanks.
I simply would note that, uh, a don, any donation has to work for the school.
Yes, we.
And clearly this one does.
Agree. We asked them to come out and show us and talk through the memorial things we've learned and what's appropriate memorial and what might not be. And they've been fabulous toward with and I think it really is a win-win.
Wonderful.
Great, good point. So we've really taken time with it.
Great. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? And unless there's anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Thank you all. Have a good night.